Mayor, it is 5:00. Are you ready to begin the closed session?
We are ready.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, November 20. May we have a roll call for the evening.
Barnacle.
Here.
Kater Thompson.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Posekay.
Here.
Shribbs.
Here.
And McDonald.
Here.
All members are present.
Wonderful. I'd like to have our city attorney introduce tonight's closed session topics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be happy to do that. The council will confer in two closed sessions tonight. One is concerning liability claims in conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. That's under Government Code Section 54956.95. The claimants NBC Construction and Engineering Incorporated, the agency claimed against is the city of Petaluma. There's significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding one potential case. The facts and circumstances, including transactional occurrences that might result in litigation and that are known to a potential plaintiff arise from claims submitted to the city by NBC Construction and Engineering regarding the Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility Outfall Relocation Project. Second closed session item tonight is conference with real property negotiators under Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the city-owned fairgrounds property, 175 Fairgrounds Drive and 866 East Washington. The agency negotiator is Peggy Flynn, city manager. The negotiating party is the 4th District Agricultural Association. Under negotiation, our price in terms of payment and other terms of use of portions of the city-owned fairgrounds property for presentation of the Sonoma Marin Fair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. I'd like to invite council member Now to comment.
I will be recusing from the fairgrounds item on the closed session.
Thank you very much. Let's move to public comment on the closed session items. The public is invited to make comments on these items as read. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. And if you wish to speak, you may turn in a speaker card to our city clerk at the front of the room. And Mr. City Attorney, is there any comment in this section from the city attorney?
Just in case.
No. Thank you very much. And have we had comments online towards this item?
We do not have any public comments for this item.
Can I ask our moderator to read our announcement for public comment?
Yes. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. Threats of violence and obscenity are grounds for removal from this meeting. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers. The first speaker will be acknowledged and invited to speak when the countdown begins.
Okay, well, I am not seeing any cards coming to the front of the room. And at this point, we will close public comment on that item, and we will now adjourn to the closed session. We will return at 6:30 or at the end of closed session, whichever comes later. Thank you.
foster community trust and maintain Petaluma's high standard of public safety. And whereas Chief Savano's vast and significant accomplishments have left an indelible legacy for the Petaluma Police Department to continue for generations of law enforcement leaders to come, and for the benefit of generations of Petalumans who can take pride in knowing their Petaluma Police Department will always strive for excellence in service to our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim the 30th day of December 2023 as Ken Savano Day, and extend our congratulations, endless gratitude, and appreciation for his faithful and distinguished service to the Petaluma Police Department, our city, and the Petaluma community. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few things that I want to make sure I do not forget. Mayor McDonald, council members, and our small but mighty city team of public servants, and most importantly, those we serve, our community, thank you for this opportunity to say thank you for allowing me to serve as a peace officer in this great city for almost, well, almost 30, more than 29 years. It's been my honor to work for alongside and lead the best group of public safety professionals a community could ask for. I wish every community around the world could have a department like ours with a culture of professionalism, compassion, and selfless service to others. I must express my sincerest appreciation to my staff for their support and commitment to service. It is they who have demonstrated the courage to listen and the humility to take action to make us better every day. A special thank you to my leadership team, especially Deputy Chief Brian Miller, who tonight carries on the responsibility of the public's trust. We and many others before us have worked so hard to gain and assumes his new role with my absolute trust and confidence to maintain the organizational excellence while always being community-centric. I would not be retiring if that was not the case. To City Manager Flynn, thank you for allowing me to serve as your first police chief. Thank you for your leadership and care for staff and the community that helped Petaluma see a better future and allowed us to rebuild this fine city. And Assistant City Manager, if I could trouble you to hand these to the city manager, I would be grateful. I'm not going to hug you again because we'll both cry. If you, if we don't win the Helen Putnam Award, the world has gone blind. So thank you for all that you've done for us. This is a different time and we're all excited. Thank you to my beautiful wife Kathleen, who has always been at my side with love and support. And to my city executive team, city council, and community, this will always be home. Thank you for the support and concern you have shown me and our first responders. I leave tonight knowing without a doubt this fine city is in your good hands. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask that our interim chief join us at the podium here for our oath of affirmation.
Of course, I have to follow up Ken, and that's always a difficult thing, but I'm excited to hear that Ken Savano Day is on the 30th, so I expect to see him back in the building. You know, most importantly, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to City Manager Flynn, to Chief Savano, to my staff and our team here. Without the support, without the confidence or the trust or the development, I wouldn't be in the position that I am today and felt supported to take on the task of following up a really remarkable person that has led our organization through, as mentioned, some really challenging times. And I feel prepared, I feel ready, I'm willing, and look forward to the next chapter of our organization and to continuing the momentum. We've done some really remarkable work, really proud of the work that our team does day and night, 365 days a year, pretty impressive people, smart, intelligent, reasonable, empathetic, compassionate. And we're proud of the organization and the work that's ahead of us. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and continue serving like I've done for almost the past 19 years and that I plan to do for the next 10 and, you know, beyond. So thank you. I appreciate it.
And just a thanks from all of us to Chief Savano, interim Chief Miller, and the great department we have here in Petaluma. Thank you all. So we will now move into next items. We can take a little minute if folks are going to change seats here. I love it all. Thank you. Our next order of business for the evening is our report out of closed session. I'd like to invite the city attorney, Eric Danley, to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no action to report tonight.
Thank you very much. That moves us to our next item for the evening, which is general public comment. And during general public comment, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited to up to three minutes per person. Depending on the number of persons wishing to address council, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. And City Attorney, do we have any comments tonight? Do you?
I can add some briefer remarks, Mr. Mayor, briefer than I've in the past. I'll just note and remind members of the public that meetings of the Petaluma City Council and other Petaluma Brown Act bodies are limited public forums, and that means that the right of the public to speak is limited in comparison to the public's right to speak in traditional forums. Public comments at meetings of Petaluma Brown Act bodies like the city council are limited to comments on topics within the legislative body's subject matter jurisdiction during general public comment and to comments pertinent to agenda items during public comment on those agenda items. We are prepared, staff are prepared, I am prepared to assist the mayor in conducting the meeting as needed to help ensure that we complete the public's business consistent with those requirements. I'm also going to remind folks that the Brown Act does not require permitting members of the public to comment from a remote location except when a legislative body member is also participating remotely. The council has suspended for the time being the opportunity for members of the public to give remote public comment to avoid disruptions such as we and other cities have experienced in the past. At the same time, given the council's commitment that staff fully support to ensure ample opportunity for the public to participate in the council's conducting of its business, the council has directed staff to revisit this issue of remote participation in city council meetings sometime in the new year, and we'll certainly be having those conversations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now we have the general public comment session open, and I'd like to ask the clerk if we received any online comments prior to our meeting.
Yes, we did receive seven general public comments, and those are posted with the agenda online.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask our moderator if she would read the informational messaging for this item.
Yep. Okay. At this time, I will start a 30-second clock for general public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speakers and the viewers.
Thank you for that. And I have three cards here that have been submitted from the audience, and so the timer will be set at three minutes. And I will read the names of the participants. Michael Shapiro, to be followed by Peter Alexander. Please come up and start. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Vice Mayor Kater Thompson and the entire council. I've come up once before. I've lived in Petaluma 15 years now. We live on Upham Street. We live in an area that is heavily used by leaf blowers, meaning there's a lot of gardeners with leaf blowers. I've spoken to a couple of you individually about this. And the more I've studied it, I've written a couple of articles for Sierra Magazine now. I've written a comment for the Press Democrat. What I'm learning is that the noise is only part of the problem. The noise can reach up to 100 decibels or sometimes even louder, which makes it hard to work. It triggers headaches. It makes it very difficult to work at home, as I do, and have Zoom meetings. It makes it very difficult to record conversations, which I do. When I interview people for the Press Democrat, I typically record the conversations. It's also stunning to me that it's not just fumes that come out of leaf blowers. It is actually an aerosol of unburned oil and gas. So essentially, it's an oil spill and a gas spill into the air. And I applaud Petaluma for being very climate-conscious. I think the 2030 initiative to be neutral in terms of our carbon emissions is extremely important. And I think this is very low-hanging fruit. And the other thing that's timely about it is that next year, 2024, California will ban the sale, but not the use, of gas-powered leaf blowers and gas-powered lawn equipment, you know, like mowers. What's interesting about this is that you could buy a gas-powered leaf blower today and use it for another 15 years. And I asked my gardener recently, what is the ban, you know, are gardeners stopping buying these things? And he's like, oh, no, are you kidding? They're going out, everybody knows they're going to be banned next year. People are buying them up. So I think it's extremely important right now that Petaluma take a stand and say, look, you can't ban them this year or next year, but you could do what Washington DC did and say, DC in mid-2018 said in three and a half years, we are banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. That doesn't mean all leaf blowers. Electric leaf blowers can still be used. That should be encouraged. They had a buyback program where people could get $50 to $75 towards the purchase of a new electric leaf blower. People in DC, as I did the reporting on this, people in DC are very, very happy. Not every single person, but the vast majority of people are much happier that they have a quieter city, they have a more peaceful city. Electric leaf blowers are just as efficient now as gas leaf blowers. You know, there's these EGO, E-G-O, E hyphen G-O is one brand. They're, they can do everything that a gas leaf blower can do.
Thank you. Your time is up.
That was.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Now we have Peter Alexander to be followed by Monica Martella. And Peter is not in chambers, so we'll move on to Monica Martella.
Hi. I've been a resident of Petaluma for five years. Thank you for, sorry, thank you for hearing my comment. Unlawful animal cruelty is occurring in at least two factory farms in Petaluma, Sunrise Egg Farm and Reichardt Duck Farm. Evidence has been gathered and offered to the DA's office, which refused it. Sonoma County Sheriff took a report but has not followed up with new, with a new investigation, from my understanding. I ask all members of the community who oppose illegal animal cruelty, including the government, to request an investigation and possible prosecution of these farms from the DA's office. The most recent investigation took place on November 2, 2023. Two sick and injured ducks and one injured chicken were rescued and taken to places where they'll get proper care. To make Petaluma better, please consider that factory farms should give way to plant and fungi farming, improving practices in ways that heal air, water, health, and habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last of the cards I have for general public comment. So I'll close general public comment for the evening and move us to council comments. And in council comments, we've been fairly successful at trying to keep ourselves at short comments. And so I'd like to continue that success rate this evening. And I'd like to start the comments tonight with council member Shribbs.
Thank you. The Climate Commission was canceled this last meeting, but we're going to be studying the blueprint for carbon neutrality between now and the next meeting and be prepared to actually go over that in detail next month. I worked with Relief Petaluma this, yesterday, and we planted 70 trees over at Mewoc School and Mewoc Park. So they all got in and established by, even though we had to switch days, by 5:00 PM, we had all 70 trees in the ground state, which is pretty phenomenal that that happened. There was also attended several meetings this last week, Blue Zones, Know Before You Grow, even watched the Planning Commission, which went all the way to 2:30 in the morning. And Ken Savano said had a last day. We were there at 7:00 AM. So all worked out well. The other thing is I did watch a webinar on ocean acidification. And a real reason for us to keep working very hard on carbon emission is that the oceans are taking even a larger impact than even our land and air. So to help save the oceans and what's happening chemically to them right now and also physically changing their parameters of temperature, we need to work with and do emissions much more than, and we need to set that as even a bigger goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Posecky.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a couple of homeless-related meetings where we continue to work on these issues. Nothing major to report in that regard. I'd like to use most of my time to just mention that in light of our talking a lot lately about, and against hate speech of various types, as well as related issues, there's one group I wanted to mention today, and I'll get more detail, go onto more detail quickly here, is the transgender folks. I, today, November 20, it's been declared an opportunity to honor the memory of those lost to anti-transgender violence over the past year. And, you know, we have little memories about a wide variety of things that maybe don't seem so important at the time. But my first contact with this issue was in 1981, my first medical job with the San Diego VA Medical Center, where a young vet just returned, or a couple of years returned from the Vietnam War, was asking for a gender transition, and I signed the paperwork for that. So I had, you know, thought about that a lot. And this is, I put that out there because this is not something that has just come on with wokeness, if you look at it that way. And I think we should honor these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it bears reiterating, if we're going to put a flag over, banners over main streets, United Against Hate, that it's against hate of all discrimination against any. And so thank you for that comment. Councilwoman, now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recent Parks and Recs meeting, they informed me that not only do we do the Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day, pre-work off those calories, it's also a food drive. And so it will be starting at Ellis Creek at 8:15 on Thanksgiving morning, and you can register on petalumaturkytrot.com. The staff is also working on writing letters back to children who write letters to Santa and drop them off at City Hall or the community center. And if the parents include a self-addressed stamped envelope, staff is busy writing those letters and sending them back between December 5 and, no, it's November 27 to December 8. Sorry about that. So get those letters to Santa and include that self-addressed stamped envelope. The senior center has lots of fun activities planned for December. November was very festive. And then Maria at the Downtown Association reminded me, and of course, I brought my visual, the Light of a Life in Walnut Park is on December 1, and that's the tree lighting in the Walnut Park. And then the next day is the Open House Downtown and the Holiday Tree Lighting at Theater Square. And then she also wants to remind people to shop Petaluma on the day Santa comes downtown on the river. And that's put on by the city as well. He'll be in the Turning Basin on December 1. Let me make sure I got that. I'm sorry, 11, November 25, a month before Christmas. I'm trying to get in with the 90 seconds. Also, these posters, Petaluma Stands, United Against Hate, with the QR code, are available at the library. I went with my grandsons to pick it up, and they reminded me that hate is a bad word. They wouldn't take a poster back because it had hate on it. So I said, well, maybe we could say everybody should be kind. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna, I was out of town traveling, so I was not able to attend Chief Savano's last day. So I'm just gonna pile on some congratulations on a long career. And thank you for leaving the whole, the whole department in good hands and in better place than when he started, for sure. I want to appreciate him, I know he's not in the room anymore, but for teaching me a lot about policing, a lot about the interconnectedness and issues. And over the last few years, I've seen a lot of, a lot of the things that I was learning about and concerned about taken, taken on with, with gusto to interim Chief Miller. Thank you and good luck to your family. Thank you for gracing us with your, with your professionalism. You are ready, and I have the utmost confidence in you that you're gonna continue to lead the department the way Chief Savano did. So thank you.
Councilmember Healy.
Yeah, I don't have any liaison reports tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kater Thompson.
Thank you. I want to thank council member Posecky for your comments on transgender. I think it's really important, and maybe next year, we can actually honor with a resolution or something, because we got an email today. My SCTA, back to council member Shribbs, there has been a 4% decrease in carbon emissions in Sonoma County. There are some cities that aren't doing as well as others, but our city was not named, so that was a good sign. So I was pleased about that. And the Planning Commission, yes, did go till 2:30, well, 2:20 AM. And I just want to say that it was a unanimous decision. And it was a very long meeting, but I did hear from some members of the public, the Chair Hooper did an excellent job keeping the meeting focused on the overlay, and the staff presentation was detailed and very good, and complimented commissioners for their comments. And as I said, the vote was unanimous for the overlay. I just want to talk about my district in District One. And since one of my neighbors is in the audience, I was driving up Maria Drive because we have the signs to slow down. And so if I see somebody out, I will just stop and talk to them. And so we got three signs on Maria Drive. But there are some other issues that my, my friend Wayne talked about, and actually, another neighbor, and one is trimming a tree, you know, just so the light will be a little bit more lit in front of an intersection. And then kind, she's doing a great job in putting red on the curbs so people aren't so close to the curbs. So when cars come up or people are walking, that you can actually see them. And so those are things that we talked about, but also, let's see, some speeding is a huge issue. And that's what I heard from people. And literally, I just stopped and talked. And also, number one complaint seems to be trailers, motorhome vehicles, and stuff stored on city streets. You hear a lot of that also. But this Friday, our new interim chief is going to be on my radio show, 103.3 FM. It's called Inside Petaluma, and it's always nice. He comes on about every four months, and we just talk about local issues and what's going on. So we'll talk about some of these issues on Maria Drive. And then the other thing is, in 2024, I'm really looking forward to ordinance updates such as, you know, leafblower, parking ordinance, and, and more. And so I think it's going to be a great year, and everybody have a safe holiday.
Thank you. And speaking of speeding, thank you very much for being in the Veterans Day Parade, carrying one of those signs of the city, "Slow the Fast Down." You know, it's a good, good new campaign by the city, and appreciate you being out there, carrying a sign for it. And I think the only comment I have that hasn't been mentioned by someone already is what a great day we had groundbreaking for the new smart station and the housing that goes there. I mean, that's just so key that we, we get affordable housing built in our community and that we link it to transportation in our community. So a big day there. So a, a big day there. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to staff for city manager comment.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and community. Again, thank you interim chief Brian Miller for stepping in into a leadership which you do so naturally, but you've got our full support. And just want to let the community know that city offices are closed Wednesday, this Wednesday and Thursday for the Thanksgiving holiday, and that staff, on behalf of staff, I'd like just to tell our community that we are very, very grateful for you. We're very thankful to be the city that we are, and it's because of the community that we, that we serve, and wish everybody a beautiful Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And moving us now into our consent calendar, before we start, I'd like to invite Councilmember Posey to speak on number seven there, I think it is, that you want to talk about. Are you, are you thinking about recusing on number seven? So I have a footnote about the, okay, so we have, and that's not a walk out of the room kind of thing, because we're in consent calendar, so that's good. And then, as I look at the consent calendar, I see the tentative agenda for our next meeting seems fairly large, and I don't know if we need to remove this from the calendar to discuss it. I think we can just discuss it as part of our previous comments, and suggest that we get the public part of that, the business part of the meeting advanced as far forward. And so I'd like to ask staff, like, what's the best trick to get the public hearing part advanced, and maybe other things we do before that altered in the agenda?
So there's, the council has choices about that, but one way we can do it is to take the general public comment at the end. We can take city council and city manager comment at the end. Consent calendar can be moved at the end if the council so pleases. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility there. It's, it's.
So I'd like to suggest we move everything to the end, except for, we have two business, public hearing things, we keep those two the way we see them on the agenda. Would anyone else comment on this item? Councilmember Barnicle?
I, I like that. The one thing that I heard when I suggested that at a prior meeting was that all of the staff names that are on there in the consent calendar then have to be awake until after the business items. So maybe we move general public comment and council comment to the end, but we keep the consent calendar up front, because otherwise, we're going to have probably a dozen or more staff that have to hang on until the wee hours.
Councilmember Healy?
So, Mr. Mayor, you and I had discussed about starting the meeting at 5:30 rather than 6:30. I don't know if that's still on the table.
Let's ask the staff input on that.
So, you know, we can, we can change the time, it's just making sure that folks in the community know they're not used to having our meetings start at 5:30. So just making sure that we're able to get ahold of everybody and make sure that they are aware that our, our council meeting's gonna start at 5:30.
So, okay, that's a solvable problem, thank you. I, I think we should start at 5:30. I think we should push, leave the consent calendar where it is, but push public comment and council comment and city manager comment to the end. I also am skeptical that even with the early start, we're going to get done at a reasonable hour. The Planning Commission started at 6:00 on this and went until 2:20 in the morning. And I don't think, given the level of interest in the community, this is, on this issue, that this is something we should restrict public comment to anything less than three minutes. So I would say that we should start at 5:30 and then have a hard close of 12:00 midnight. And if we can't finish by 12:00 midnight, we can come back the next day and finish it. We shouldn't be conducting the public's business after the bar is closed at 2:00 in the morning. We really should not be. This is an important issue, and that's not fair to the community.
Okay, so we got several different things going. Did you wish to weigh in on a piece of this?
I was just gonna say, if we're going to have a council meeting continue to the next day, then we should get that information out with the earlier start. That was my comment.
Okay. So I like the idea of an early start, and I like the idea of moving items before it. And maybe we have, we communicate that the public hearing business, the two items of public hearing, maybe they have the 6:30 start, so that nobody's fooled, and nobody misses them, the key thing they were going to come from. So if we hold them at 6:30 and push everything else before 6:30, now, with that, trying to craft an answer, and back to Councilmember Barnicle.
Also, that was a joint committee meeting that had multiple different topics being discussed. So I don't think that we're gonna, and I think we can all be more concise than that meeting was. I know I, I was in Chicago, and I watched it until 4:15 in the morning, until the vote, because I was captivated. I'm that guy. And I commit to being way more concise than that meeting was. So I think it's on us to just be more concise, too. But I agree, we shouldn't constrict public comment, but I certainly don't want to come back the next day.
So I, I hear your confidence in completing by midnight.
No, no, committing, no, not committing. Not confidence to complete before midnight. I'm confident that I'll be concise.
Okay, so, Councilmember Shribs?
The only thing I would ask if, because I agree with Councilmember Healy, that midnight is a good, hard close on meetings, for all meetings that we conduct, because I know that decision-making after midnight up here, or even listening and staying, it gets very difficult. So I would agree with, maybe we ought to make that a regular thing, not just for one night. And the other thing is, for the early start and the way we rearrange it, if this is successful, let's, let's be thinking about changing it, the way we format things continuously for the same reason, because we want the public here to discuss with us first, and so that they can get, and not have to wait till 11 or 12 o'clock at night to, to have their say about certain things. So anyway, just, I'd like to use this as, let's try it as a pilot, and I would agree with that. And let's think about maybe reformatting down the line also.
Councilmember now.
Um, thank you. And I'm gonna remind everybody that last time I was on the council, we had a 3 o'clock meeting in which we got consent calendar out of the way and a lot of business. And then we had time for a closed session or a dinner break, and then we came back and we got work done that was, you know, the public could speak. And they didn't get shorten their time allotment of three minutes if there were 30 speakers, because we had a lot of passion behind the shopping centers that were being built on the east side. And some of those meetings went till 1 o'clock in the morning, even though we started at 6:30. So I, I think that we should start the meeting earlier and end at midnight, and then have a clause in there that says, if we don't finish, we'll come back the next day with a, after some rest.
So I'm hearing a consensus on the 5:30 start time. Councilmember Barnicle?
I'm fine with the 5:30 start time. I can't commit to coming back the next day. I have to make plans in my life. I carve out my Monday night to do this. I commit to being here and doing the public's business. But asking, you know, thinking the public's gonna come back on Tuesday, that they don't have plans on Tuesday, I mean, it's just, there's, there's no, there's no rational thing where people are saying, I'm gonna hold my Tuesday open in case council goes past midnight. Like, we gotta get stuff done. Or push it to another meeting, push it to, push it to a future meeting where it's already agendized, but coming back on Tuesday is a, in thinking you're gonna have the public ready and willing and able to come and participate, let alone council members who, who have lives, like, it's just not, not realistic.
Councilmember Healy?
Well, I guess alternatively, we could have the hard midnight stop and then come back the following Monday, which is an off Monday. We don't have, currently have anything scheduled for that date, and finish the, finish the item at that time. I just put that out there as an option.
So, since I'm hearing the hard stop has an alternate idea for it, I'd like to take a straw poll, and, and the two choices are gonna be, keep going till we're done, or find another solution. And, and solution might be a couple of different things. So I'd like to see the quick show of hands who says, stay until we're done, from them. So that's one, two, three, four, four. So in changing this meeting, I'd like the suggestion, the supportive council on a suggestion that we start at 5:30, that we have the public hearing start at 6:30, and that we go till we finish. Is, is that, can we, can we see that that's the motion on the floor? And, and, you know, take this as our opportunity to be a learning experience. Okay, thank you very much. And, and if we have that kind of crafted for revising the tentative agenda here, the motion we're looking for is the consent calendar with tentative agenda change as suggested. Councilmember Healy, you look like.
Yeah, could we vote on item two separately, please?
Item two is pulled, and so let's vote on items one, three, four, five, and six, so that we get everybody in on this vote. Someone wants to make that motion?
I'll move items one and three through seven on the.
Excluding seven.
Excluding seven, okay.
Actually, we have, we have motion, we have a second, we have a roll call vote.
And can you repeat, was that Now for the second, or Kater Thompson?
The, the second, the second's Kater Thompson.
Thank you. Barnicle?
Yes.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posey?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for item seven with Posey abstaining?
I'll move item seven.
Second.
And Healy is the second?
Mayor, could I just interject really quick? Did we take public comment for the consent calendar?
You know, what would we do without you? My apologies. We should be moving to public comment on the entirety of the consent calendar. And as we start this, I'd like to ask the clerk if we received any online for the consent calendar?
No public comment was received.
Thank you very much. And in-house, if anyone has a public comment here, we'll take cards at the front, not seeing that there's anyone rushing to the counter. We will now close the public comment period and bring it back to council. And we had a motion for item seven, a motion and second for item seven, and we're ready for a roll call vote.
Barnicle?
Yes.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posey recused. Shribs?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to item two, Councilmember Healy, did you have a comment you wanted to make, or any one of, Councilmember Barnicle?
Question for the city attorney, should we remake the motion on one, three through, one and three through six?
Sorry about that. There's no one present in chambers to, that seems to want to address that, so I don't think there's any utility from doing that, but I appreciate being, being sensitive to that.
All right.
Unless the council wishes, but I don't think it serves a purpose. Thank you.
I'll move item two with a 5:30 start time and a 6:30 for the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Second by the vice mayor. Roll call vote.
Barnicle?
Yes.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
Now?
No.
Posey?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our consent calendar for the evening. Moving into public hearings matters for consideration, and here we are having a resolution accepting the Public Safety Facilities Strategic Master Plan and direct staff to prepare an RFP for design and project management services for construction of a new fire station emergency operations center. And to help us out with this tonight, I'd like to ask Assistant City Manager Brian Cochran to start the conversation here.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Yes, we're happy to be here tonight to present an update on the Public Safety Facilities Master Plan. As the council's aware, we were before you back in July with an initial review of the draft plan. We had some great comments received from council members and the community on some various aspects of that plan. So we're back before you tonight with a more finalized version for you to accept, as well as to provide us some direction on the next steps for the plan. So tonight, we will be discussing briefly some background and origins of this project overall, give an overview of the master plan and some of the findings and recommendations that came out of that plan. We did want to spend some time on the different comments that we received back in July, and then how the staff, as well as our consulting architects, Rob Mans and Laura Blake, have been working with the staff in the various departments, police, fire, public safety, and the city manager's office, to respond as best we could to those comments, keeping in mind some of the specific operational considerations and, and other questions and thoughts that we had about how to, for example, consolidate the design into a slightly smaller footprint, move some things around to get the best, most operationally efficient facility possible. So we'll give you those updates in terms of how we have modified the, the renderings and the planning since you last saw them. And then finally conclude with status and some next steps in terms of moving this project forward to, to realize the vision. So wanted to just talk about a little bit of background, and frankly, we probably could have gone back a few decades on the history of our public safety renovations and facility planning, but we wanted to just highlight the last couple of years and how we've gotten to where we are today. So we're really starting off back in 2020 when voters approved Measure U with a long list of potential goals for Measure U, one of those specifically including ensuring that we had excellent police and fire facilities, as well as operations, continuing our 24/7/911 response to our community. We did come forward with a goals update, as well as, at the time, what we called our Measure U Implementation Plan, and a key part of that did include issuing bonds, both for roadway improvements, but also for the potential construction of a new fire station or replacement of our historic Fire Station Number One downtown. So that became a key city goal, and we, we implemented that as part of our Measure U plan.
Excuse me, Brian.
Oh, yeah.
Our translators have their hand up, so I'm assuming they're.
I'm thinking I should probably slow down and stop between sentences. Thank you for that. So moving into 2022, we had a couple of different things happening. First is that we brought forward the list of the council's top 10 priorities. One of those priorities did include the fire station and the broader Public Safety Facilities Master Plan as one of those top 10 priorities. Ongoing during 2022, we also had operational assessments happening for both our police and fire departments, and those were conducted by another consultant, CPSM. The council may recall seeing those recommendations from our police and fire chiefs back in November of 2022. Then moving into 2023, we had an update of our top 10 priorities, which actually was just an informational update, the priorities stayed the same, which meant that the fire station and the Public Safety Facilities Master Planning process remained on that list as one of those top 10 priorities. And then, of course, moving into the second quarter, actually, July of this year, as I mentioned, we had the presentation presenting the initial draft recommendations of the plan. And now here, we sit today with a finalized version, as well as some next steps. So with that kind of background over the last three to four years, I was going to turn it over now to Rob Mans and Laura Blake, our consulting architects, to take the council and the community through the rest of the presentation. We do have a variety of representatives from our other departments here as well to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. The next slide, please. So just to give you an overview, this is a master plan to cover all your public safety facilities. It includes a series of steps over a number of years. The immediate steps, which are in, beginning to be in process now, are the Fire Station One, seismic strengthening, and all-gender restroom addition. And at the police station, modifications to the existing building to improve the lockers, restroom, fitness, and office spaces. Next, in the short range, is a new central fire headquarters and emergency operations center. And what we're thinking about is in the mid-range, is the Fire Station One renovation or replacement. And then the longer range, the new police station, fire stations two and three renovation and or replacement. Station, Fire Stations Two and Three renovation or replacement, and then a new public safety support building for some of the additional equipment the operations have. The next slide, please. So back in July, when we presented, we heard several comments regarding the new public safety facilities at the fairgrounds. First of all, was to confirm the specific location at the fairgrounds that seemed most appropriate for the facility, show the Phase Two Police Station in addition to the Phase One Fire Headquarters and Emergency Operations Center, and confirm the co-location, having those two things adjacencies, what efficiencies were afforded by that. There was a request to refine the Emergency Operations Center's scope, the size of it, and what it includes, which of course then impacts the cost. And the last comment was to consider a two- or three-story buildings to reduce the footprint, the size of the building, and the size of the site that is needed. And we'd like to report back on all those items this evening. The next slide, please. And first of all, before we get into the graphics, I just want to remind everyone that this is a master planning effort, and what we've developed to date are really test fits to show how the building needs that we worked with city staff to understand and develop and project so that they serve the city well for a number of years can fit on the site and demonstrate the feasibility of the project. These diagrams are not intended to be a final design, and it's assumed that alternatives will be studied in subsequent phases to determine if the building footprint and site can be further reduced than our initial efforts to reduce it in this, in this initial master planning phase. So having said that, the proposed location for the new facility is at the corner of Johnson and Kennelworth, that intersection at the northwest end of the site. And the reason for that is because there's synergy with nearby community services and easy to integrate into the area of master planning that is ongoing. This particular area of the fairgrounds has the least impact on current uses of the fairgrounds. It also provides good emergency response access and egress to respond to events, and it fosters collaboration with the planned, the city's planned resiliency center. The next slide, please. Thank you. This is a close-up view of that corner. You can see on the left-hand side of the images, the little bit of the swim center to orient you, Johnson Drive running vertically, and Kennelworth Drive running horizontally. And the existing area that shows that it is mostly a graded area and showing how the new public safety facility could fit into that location. The facility is shown here is occupying about 4.8 acres of the 55-acre fairgrounds parcel, so about 9% of the overall fairgrounds area. The next slide, please. The location with some intersection improvements on Johnson Drive provides good access and quick access to the major arterial roadways network for emergency response. So you can see that you can cross Washington, East Washington, you can go north, you can go south, and into all the various neighborhoods to respond to events. The next slide, please. So one of the questions that came up, and it's a good one, and it's always one that is a little bit different for public safety facilities than maybe some other uses, is how can you reduce the facility footprint? And what we looked at on the original test fit is on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side is a more compact test fit that we've done to date. And we looked at reducing the number of functions that could be on the ground floor, and Rob will go into that more in detail, while maintaining emergency response capabilities and not compromising those. We also looked at reducing and making the parking lot more efficient so that we could reduce the area shown. And overall, between these two images, the original layout and the current updated, more compact layout, that's about an acre reduction in area. And Rob, do you want to walk us through that more specifically?
Sure. Thanks, Laura. So part of the process in reducing this program, I'll take you back a bit in terms of how we arrived at a program. There was significant stakeholder input, city management, with the fire department, with the police department, in terms of identifying what the needs were, what the space requirements were going to be, and how to benefit in terms of eliminating redundancy, finding opportunities to collaborate, getting out of those siloed environments, and making sure that we could optimize the quantity and types of spaces that could be shared. So previously, when we met with everyone and presented our initial findings or the draft findings, if you will, we were basically taking that program and having not designed anything yet, but having taken the program, the chunks and the pieces of it in larger conglomerates, meaning apparatus space, bunk room areas, patrol zones, not necessarily the rooms themselves, but the major components, laying them out on the site, and just fundamentally test fitting that to see how big might this building be? How might it be oriented? But not getting into the granular level yet. So when we met last time, we took the comments that we received, we then further validated the program by going into what Laura previously referred to as a test fit. And that test fit basically starts to explore that granular level a little bit more, where we're getting into the, the analysis of how big these rooms are, where the exact relationship is, in order to validate the total square footage requirement, and better validate what elements need to be, where they need to be in terms of maintaining operational efficiency and relationships. If we go to the next slide, in the initial program, we had some key spaces that were initially outlined to be on the ground floor, such as the traffic division, the cert division, criminal investigations division. And having heard the comments previously, we reallocated some of those spaces. We condensed the footprint as much as possible in order to maintain operational efficiency, which I'll go into in a moment, and condensed that footprint to basically reduce the site impact by the acre that Laura had previously mentioned. Some of the challenges that a public safety facility faces is the prioritization of what needs to be on the ground floor. What is actually a single story versus a story and a half or story and three-quarters volume, which we'll talk about in a second. And particularly as it relates to fire department, the fire department, is the response times. When we talk about NFPA, there's prescribed response times in terms of when the department must arrive on scene with their units. And when we back out that travel distance, the alerting procedure, so on and so forth, we are left with only so much time within the building that our first responders can move from where they are to the apparatus and report as, as responding. And so naturally, spaces like bunk rooms that require the firefighters to maybe spend a little bit more time waking up and get moving versus being in the kitchen where you're already alert, those bunk room spaces then therefore require a little bit closer proximity to the apparatus, or desire more proximity, if you will, in order to reduce those response times. Then, of course, we have other programmatic elements like the apparatus bay, where the engines are being stored, or, you know, the specialized units on the police side where the vehicles are being stored, that obviously need ground floor access. Seems the reason that, you know, we wouldn't take a fire engine off the second floor. Other elements that may be a little bit less conspicuous to those that aren't necessarily familiar with the planning of public safety facilities would be, you know, locating things like the patrol units on the ground floor, where they may bring someone that's detained and maintaining appropriate security provisions. So when we went and we started really test fitting this program, we heard what council had to say. We strove to develop a solution that optimized the vertical construction of this facility, as well as preserving the security and the safety of the site design and internal functions, and looking at ways to organize the building in a manner that limited the amount of sprawl, if you will, or horizontal sprawl on the site. It's probably of importance to note that the apparatus spaces that are shown on the ground level here in the red color and the top right portion of the C, if you will, where you see all the vehicles and the police, those are considered high base spaces. So while there's only a single floor shown in plan, those are actually about one and three-quarters stories tall. So in that regard, we're trying to take advantage of the vertical space. We've further compressed the evidence storage in those environments by taking advantage of that vertical space to use higher shelving in those environments to kind of reduce that horizontal impact. So at the end of the day, we were able to move roughly 6,800 square feet, I believe, of program space that was previously allocated to the ground floor, to the upper level, and we were able to create some further reductions of about 1,000 square feet in evidence storage, which yielded a total footprint on the ground floor of about 50,200 square feet, which was a, you know, roughly a 7,000 to 8,000 square foot reduction overall. So on the right, as you look at the, the second floor plan, if you will, there's space on the north for some rooftop equipment. And we could talk about the importance of security provisions of having rooftop equipment that is not necessarily accessible to public tampering. But the, the horizontal elements, the Cs that show non-program space, those are actually two-story volumes that align over that. And the next couple of slides that we'll see, if you want to go to the next slide, kind of show the massing of how these spaces might come together. Basically, we've, I feel like we've optimized that two-story environment where the apparatus, again, is roughly that one and three-quarter story environment. The EOC, which sits at about 4,800 square feet, sits over the fire department because it's, does not require those response times to the apparatus bay. That purplish color is the central shared access point, which appropriately links and separates police from fire. And then to the plan north there, you see the two-story police department, which consists of command on the second level, investigations, traffic, the 911 call center. And then on the lower level is more of all of the ground floor operational stuff that, that kind of requires that. As we go through some of the next slides, maybe, you know, a little bit clip, it shows that the building itself is creating a secure environment and creating an optimal efficiency in terms of how that secure parking flows. The building, if you will, creates a shroud or a shield for the secure environment where patrol cars, civilian staff, and first responders will park not only their department-issued vehicles, but also their personally-owned vehicles during shift change. And at this point, you know, understanding the spirit of sustainability, we also strove to impact, since the last version, and integrate some solar panels. And then from the Johnson Drive approach, you know, we're not really getting into the architectural design at this point, per se, but just kind of suggesting that there should be some separation from the public right-of-way for security purposes. And obviously, depending on the master planning objectives for the entire site, something like Johnson Drive could be re-envisioned. We had, you know, discussed maybe some, some traffic investigations there as well. But that buffer that separates Johnson Drive from the visitor parking lot could certainly be something that is integrated into more of a pedestrian-oriented or friendly-type environment. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity there. And as Laura previously suggested, you know, the next phase would be for the RFP and the architect of record that is selected to take this project further, to get into the weeds a little bit further and explore numerous alternatives as to how, you know, you might find more efficiency and effectiveness out of this particular venture. And I think that takes us to our cost estimates, just fundamentally in terms of, you know, where we stand, the Fire Station One improvements, which consist predominantly of female facility upgrades, and seismic strengthening would be the, the first on the list. And then the Police Station improvements, which largely address the immediate overcrowding issues that the police department is facing, as well as providing some much-needed facilities that would support recruitment retention, such as fitness centers, office space. Right now, they're, they're pretty jammed up in spaces that once served as closets, which we, is obviously a bit of a challenge and pretty clearly articulated in the report. And then the, the major effort, as Laura pointed out, in terms of the, the shorter range, would be to start the planning, which consists of the entitlements, the design, the solicitation, which is, I think, is the, the resolution for this evening, for the EOC and Fire Headquarters. And then beyond that, a little bit longer range, which would require additional study to get more definitive costs, would be Fire Station One, whether that consists of a major renovation or replacement, or, I'm sorry, major renovation or relocation. The new Police Station, which would serve as the second phase to the Fire Headquarters and the EOC, the replacement or renovation of Fire Station One and/or Three. And then, as Laura previously stated, the Public Safety Support Building, which was largely geared towards storage of larger formats of evidence and other ancillary vehicles the department used. The next slide, or which I believe is our last, that, you know, where we currently stand, or where the city at large stands, and I think, you know, Brian and the, the fire representatives and police representatives could speak on this, is the operational and needs assessment has been completed for all facilities. We have a pretty good idea collectively of what every fire station and public safety facility within the city is going to require for the next foreseeable future, next 25 or so years. That master plan has been updated, and the programs have been completed. The Fire Station One and Police Station improvements, the Fire Station One strengthening and the Police Station improvements are anticipated to start design soon, with anticipated construction in 2025. And the next critical steps would be to start the entitlement process for the Fire Headquarters and the Emergency Operations Center, develop an RFP for the solicitation of architectural and engineering services associated with the, the headquarters in EOC, and then determine the bond issuance date associated with the, the schedule. So that kind of is the synopsis, Laura. Is there anything you wanted to anchor with?
I think that, that gives the overview that we hope to give this evening.
Thank you, Rob and Laura. And I just wanted to conclude by mentioning the resolution. Rob touched on it briefly, but we are asking the council to adopt a resolution that would accept the report as presented. It would confirm the location as being that fairgrounds location that you saw in the renderings earlier. It would acknowledge, although this is not a specific budget action tonight, just we're acknowledging that the, the existing CIP budget of 27 million clearly is not going to be sufficient for that Fire Station in EOC. So acknowledging that that is going to be closer to a $40 million project, and then directing, excuse me, directing staff to develop the RFP to solicit for design services. And as well, we are recommending some project management services to help continue guiding this project forward. So thank you, and staff are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's start up here with Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. Could you go back one slide, please? So I guess I was hoping tonight for a more robust explanation of the total cost of this program and how we can expect to pay for it. And I see a lot of TBDs in there with significant square footage assigned. Could, could someone, would someone be willing to actually take a, a guess at what the construction cost for all those TBDs taken together might be?
Laura, did you want me to fill that, or Brian, or?
So I, I could start by just mentioning, and actually, I failed to mention this at the beginning, so let me say it here. We did notice a, an accidental omission in the online report that initially got posted with this agenda item. It did not include several exhibits that were supposed to have been attached. Those did get uploaded this afternoon. One of those exhibits, I believe it's exhibit number six, does have the more detailed costing for each of these projects, so that is available. I think-
Can you just, can you just tell us what it is? Assume we haven't seen it?
Yeah, Rob, I don't know if you have that handy to just rattle those off. I know part of the, part of the concern of putting all of those on the slide is that, because the dates are TBD at this point, and they probably will remain TBD for a while, the costs are going to be partially dependent on how many years out into the future those are built, just based on overall construction escalation.
Okay, but let's just say we're talking $20, $25. What, what's the total on that?
Yeah, so Rob, did you want to try to go through that?
Sure. It's a, it's, it is a complicated answer, as Brian pointed out, because it largely depends on when things are going to happen and projected escalation rates. This is a longer range-
Rob, if you could do it in today's dollars, I think, was what the request was.
With today's dollars, I think. Well, the part of the challenge is that exhibit seven looks at what they would be escalated out based on the capital improvement process, right? So we're looking at an average rate of 5% per year. I don't have those numbers handy. I will have them momentarily. Let me dig them up, and I'll come back to answer that question. I have the long-range- I have the long-range projected of what these things might cost in the year twenty thirty-four. But if we look at, and we have, we have the closer projections of the more immediate spaces. So just give me a second to pull that information-
Can you just remind us to slow down just a little bit for the interpretation? We have a request for-
That's fine. Please, please look for it. But what I'm leading to, my ultimate question here is, how much can, of this can we afford to pay for? And, you know, we know we have Measure U. We think that we, our second bond issuance may be bigger than we initially thought. The fire tax countywide measure for March is likely to pass, and that'll provide certain money. But, you know, I'm, I, there's nothing before me that leads me to believe that those sources taken together will be sufficient to cover this list. And I'm wondering if we're, we have, you know, a Cadillac wish list and the ability to afford, you know, maybe a Honda Civic. And I don't have a comfort level with, with that, with the level of work that's been done on this so far.
Sure, so I have that information now.
Yes, that's a great question. And just to run through those first three facilities, that really is the nut that we think we can crack right now. So there are several different funding sources that will all be combining together on this project. We do have about five million dollars in city facilities impact fees that we can apply to the project. We did an initial estimate of the bond issuance, as you mentioned, Councilmember Healy. We do believe that's going to be, there will be more available there. We've put out kind of ballpark forty million, but that could be very much plus or minus, depending on interest rates, depending on, you know, a variety of things that are out of our control. The fire facilities, or, excuse me, the fire tax, if that passes, will provide, I believe, a dedicated one million dollars annually to service debt on this project, which, you know, could yield us another fifteen to twenty million in bonding capacity if we needed it. And then we may also have future grant opportunities. Those are sometimes available. We were successful in getting a potential federal appropriation for a part of the EOC project through Jared Huffman's office. So there are a variety that are all coming together to form the funding matrix for this project. But I do believe, at least as we sit right now, those first three on the list, the Fire Station One improvements, the Police Station Improvement Project, and the Fire Headquarters and EOC, we do have identified funding for those. Now, everything listed as TBD below, those would be dependent on identifying future funding sources.
Including the new police station, which would not be eligible for the county tax measured dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
And I have that information available, Brian. So that is exhibit six in the report. And that identifies, as Brian just pointed out, we've got the immediate costs kind of identified, and then we've got some longer-range costs, which would be the replace, which we're anticipating to be the replacement or major renovation of Fire Station One. And when I say replacement, that means just relocation. And the police station-
Would you be willing to share screen?
Sure, I could do that. Standby.
I thought Fire Station One was going to be upgraded where it sits, not moved.
And one of the challenges, and Laura, if you want to speak to the Searise.
So we initially, in July, thought that Fire Station One could be renovated in place. It needs seismic work, as you know. It needs other enhancements and a full upgrade to meet modern operations. What we learned recently, and this is not incorporated in the numbers, the cost numbers that, that Rob is going to share, is that it is located, Fire Station One is located in the Searise zone. And the challenge there is that typically, when you have a fire station in a Searise zone, all the people space is on the second floor versus the first floor. The existing Fire Station One has people spaces on the first floor, so that, our recommendation is, a next step for Fire Station One would be to study that issue in more detail, determine if it's viable to renovate the existing fire station, or more cost-effective to build a new one.
So the old Casa Grande Motel site is still in play for Fire Station One? Is that possibly what I'm hearing here?
Is that three oh seven Pedalum Boulevard?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, sorry. I didn't know it by that name.
Yeah, well, sorry, I'm an old-timer.
So to get back to the shared screen here, there are four sheets included within exhibit six, starting with the preliminary cost, and it probably behooves me to walk through this in a little bit detail here, starting with the cost of the EOC elements in, excuse my squiggly mouse, in twenty twenty-three dollars, right? So we can use historic data to know what this would cost if we did this and we were design-ready today to go to construction. Unfortunately, we don't have the crystal ball to know how long that takes, so what we do is, or what any responsible planner would do, is take, anticipate what the midpoint of construction would be, which would be two years from the date of issuance, and then assume an economic escalation factor of four and a half percent, which is typically the trend. We've had some pretty significant spikes about a year ago, but seem to be leveled at about two percent now. So, you know, being conservative, you take this number, and you tack your costs on at this point to say the construction costs would be about six point three. The Fire Station Headquarters, again, same exercise, twenty-seven million, anticipating an additional two and a half for escalation, yields the thirty point three million. And then moving into planning for Fire Station One, you'll see that what really starts to change with this, as we go through these projects, is now, just for planning purposes and budget purposes, as Brian pointed out, not having a definitive timeframe at this point as to when these go to construction. We're making some larger assumptions at this point. So, you know, we would anticipate that the ten thousand square feet that is necessary to house Fire Station One would be approximately fourteen point five million. However, now we're looking at approximately five years at that escalation rate, which tacks on an extra three and a half million and brings the total up to eighteen. So, you know, compounding interest is great in your 401K and your IRA. It's not so friendly in construction. Moving to the police station, at roughly forty thousand square feet, we would anticipate, given historical data, that you're probably at about fifty million for that effort in terms of twenty twenty-three dollars. But the problem is, is that now we're trying to guess out about ten to eleven years, which comes with the significant impact of thirty-one, yielding a longer-range plan of eighty-one. So circling that comment back to Brian's point is, you know, that number comes down substantially the sooner we can do it and the sooner we might be able to secure funds to digest that.
Okay, thank you. Shifting gears a little bit, I notice we're going to be taking quite a few parking spaces from the fairgrounds site that are used at the time of the fairgrounds. Can you tell us how many parking spaces will be lost for the fair?
That we don't have an answer on.
So you haven't analyzed how the loss of fair parking impacts the viability of our annual fare?
I will, I'm totaling that right now. Standby.
I think, I think we can say that the, what's typically known as Lot B on the fairgrounds is, what, once the full build-out occurs with the police station, if that were to occur, that would take out all of Lot B. And I think Rob can probably tally up how many spaces. But it's also important to realize that in the near term, while the fire and, Fire Station and EOC will be constructed with their associated parking, that does leave a portion of that overall acreage that we're identifying for the site as undeveloped until the police station-
It does, but it's kind of chopped off from the rest of the parking lot-
It is a bit chopped off.
-because of the way that the police and fire facilities are projected to be placed there.
Yeah, I totally agree. But there may be some ancillary uses that we can put over on that side, whether or not it's, you know-
I'd just be curious to know how many spaces we're talking about.
It's, it's about a hundred and seventy-five paved and striped spaces.
Thank you. That's it for me for questions. I have comments for later.
Okay. And anyone else with questions? Councilmember Schrebs.
One was mentioned, going out twenty-five years, that this would serve for about twenty-five years, I think that's what I heard. And, but I think I, we need to start thinking longer term. And looking at the growth of our city, right now, we're a little over sixty thousand and at a growth rate of about ten thousand people per year. That's what it's been over the last about three years. If that continues on and we hit a hundred K by twenty-one hundred, will this facility, both police, assuming we get this all done, is it going to be adequate to meet those future needs? Or do we need to start thinking about spaces that, saving spaces for satellite sites fifty years from now that we need to save for, for the future growth of the population here? How far out are we going? And, and then how many people total, the fire and the police, let's answer that one first, and I'll get to the next one.
That's a fantastic question. So to answer your question is that this strategic facilities plan is intended to address, you know, as far as we can see at this juncture. Any strategic master plan obviously should be updated as conditions change and times warrant. That's obviously recommended within there. But your point about satellites is, is well-taken. So generally speaking, this headquarters facility would be developed to serve, the headquarters itself would be developed to serve the city well for the next fifty years. As the city potentially experiences the growth that you are describing, it's presumed that those types of calls and those challenges and where those calls for service, services would occur, would be largely driven by the type of zoning that the city implements in terms of whether you're getting into, you know, more than mid-rise construction, whether it continues to develop in a horizontal setting, what types of traffic situations start to develop. And based upon that, particularly from the fire station standpoint, you know, and Chief Shaeft may be able to comment on this a little bit more effectively than I can as the chief. But at that juncture, you know, if you started to see response times inhibited, which are beyond the projected purview of the twenty-five years, you may be looking at, okay, hey, we probably need to think of a substation somewhere in order to keep those response times in check. But at this time, with all of the data that's been collected and is available, that's not on the immediate horizon in terms of twenty years of being able to respond to. So I guess what I would say in summary is that this would be, the headquarters facility in terms of its location, would be the right move for the long, long, long term of the city. And if you needed to supplement that later at a smaller substation, that would certainly still be within the cards. This wouldn't prohibit you from doing that.
Okay. Next question is on the balance between fire and police, looking at the staffing, the police that at any one time in service versus the fire, even though the fire is housed and living and they're twenty-four-seven onsite, living there, the balance between the actual square footage between the fire and the police, do we have a good enough balance? And is, is there enough shared space so that if there is changes down the road, can, I'm looking at the interactions of fire and police, can we go back and forth? Is there some flexibility in moving space around for that in the future? So, and just the number of people that are onsite any one time, day and night, do we have, I know for the police, you had a couple of things got removed, such as the, the cells for temporary housing for folks that are being detained, so without removal. But for all the services that are needed, it looks like the police station is about equal to fire, but I'm thinking with the number of people that we may need more space for police than fire. So I'm not quite seeing that.
Sure. So Deputy Chief Miller, I'm not sure if you want to comment on this, but, you know, we've done a significant amount of programming associated with it. Fundamentally, one of the things that we see as public safety architects that focus on the planning of these environments is, while the mission is similar in terms of serving the community, the method in which these two departments do that is drastically different. So as you pointed out, the fire station is what houses the majority of their first responders, and they leave from that environment to serve the community during their times of, time of need. On the flip side, when it comes to law enforcement, the majority of the staffing that is associated with the police station, or a significant portion of that, I should say, is actually patrol. And those individuals are using the police station as a touchdown space, as a, as an area that they come back to, to complete reports, but it is not where they are spending the vast majority of their time. They're spending the majority of their time out in the community, in their cruisers, meeting with, you know, local businesses and residences and performing their calls for service. So when you look at the square footage requirements for that of a firefighter, which has dedicated space for a bunk room of about a hundred and twenty square feet for per firefighter, locker space, turnout gear space, so on and so forth, that square footage starts to add up per capita compared to that of a patrol officer who has much less storage needs than square footage needs in order to complete their duties in an effective way.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to add something to that?
No, I think that was pretty on point. I would say that, you know, we did the site visit at the shared public safety facility down in Santa Fel to really make sure that we were being thoughtful and considerate of those type of challenges and needs. And really, the reality is, is, is for the majority in my entirety of my career, I've worked in the same building. And so we were very sensitive to, we've been effective and nimble, but what do we really need and what is the necessary scope and scale to ensure that we're a modern, full-service police department? And I think Rob and Laura, being the experts and looking at the efficiencies and, and the areas and the operational needs, have identified that well for us, and we're, we're really competent in the programming that they've installed.
Good, thank you. Because one of the issues that we raised earlier was fire and police working together and communicating, maybe especially if there's large emergencies, I'm going to shift into Resiliency Center here in a second, but if they're working together on projects, the community, the communication back, because right now it still looks like separation between the two, except for maybe the entrance. And if there's more possibilities for communications, meeting, and interactivity of when we have emergencies, we're talking about regional emergencies, not just taking care of our own city. So I'm assuming that those possibilities are entering into the construction of the building also, so to allow for more interaction and shared use of facilities.
Yeah, absolutely. I think just for, you know, safety and security considerations, there's certain vestibles and protocols that we have to, especially on the law enforcement side, take into consideration. But, you know, from day one, we have a working relationship that's existing with our Pedalum Fire Department partners and a culture where we work in a collaborative effort all the time. What I really appreciate and what we don't currently have in our existing facilities is that we're already onsite. We welcome our public safety partners to our facility currently for the Emergency Operations Center, but as designed, there are shared conference areas. We envision not only just the EOC, but off some of the entrance corridors, public spaces for community groups to come in and have meetings there beyond just emergency management issues. And then additionally, you know, from briefing areas, from lunch areas, we really envision this being a blended public safety facility. And then also being considerate, you know, where there are sleeping quarters and things where the firefighters are living and staying twenty-four-seven, being thoughtful to not impede kind of those recovery efforts that they need as part of their, their work shifts.
And Chief Miller, I could probably expand on that, just cite a couple of examples of, that really tie into both questions about, you know, future-proofing and understanding that. So one example that I'll share is, right out of the gate, you'll notice that in, in the programming and in the plan, we have a fitness center here that's dedicated to the fire department. These dashed lines actually show the potential future fit out of addition, of additional dormitories that would be associated if and when the city needs to place another unit in service. So there's flexibility there in terms of master plans, but we assume that that would not happen until at least after the police department is operational. So where we see opportunities for collaboration and interaction among staff is the joint-use fitness center on this side of the building, where firefighters and police officers would interact. And while this lobby may seem like something that separates them, this is certainly an opportunity where fire and police can mutually conduct public meetings or press conferences associated with that. And to the point of definite integration is that the upper level, the, that connects police and fire, could be secured on an as-needed basis that affords both using agencies to take advantage of the EOC, the training rooms, and the various meeting rooms that exist on the law enforcement side to share those spaces. When we- When we originally did the programming for this headquarters facility, we looked at this as a siloed environment in order to better understand where efficiencies and collaboration could take place. And ultimately, we were able to find efficiencies that reduced the total build out of a headquarters facility from right around a hundred thousand square feet down to the seventy three thousand square feet that we see today. That obviously wasn't just in shared spaces, but just, you know, gaining efficiency in terms of operations. And so I will say that I have enjoyed the past twenty five years of my career working with police departments and fire departments all across the country. And and I'm not just saying it because you guys are in the room and because Chief Savano just retired. You guys have been an absolute pleasure to work with. And it is very rare that I see a fire department and a police department collaborate and get along so well, let alone put the needs of the other agency before their own. So I can tell you with one hundred percent conviction that you guys have the absolute greatest leadership in your first responder community. And they did a fantastic job of collaborating to find what they need in in an effective manner.
Good. Thank you. That sounds very good for us. Now, I'd like to shift gears to the resiliency center, which was promised to the folks as one of the things on the fairground. And if we're going to include whatever that residency represents, multiple things could be included in it, but especially for emergency purposes. So and we wanted something that would be close by and connected to fire and police. So I'm thinking about what size a facility might be needed for something like that that would do multi-purposes, including regional emergencies. And where'd we locate that nearest? And where that where that footprint might be in association? What type of interactions might occur to make sure that that our our safety teams are working with the resiliency center team when they come in on a regional basis? And if we have something that does happen, major earthquakes coming one of these days. So when we have ten thousand people show up, are the current facilities that are being planned coordinating with the resilience center that may be coming? Hopefully, yes, that we get the grant monies and make that all happen. So are we connecting the dots there for for that future?
I think I could start the answer to that one. If anybody else wants to chime in, please do. So the resiliency center, as proposed in the grant submittal that we that we submitted about two months ago, is envisioned as roughly a ten thousand square foot building, could be a little more, could be less, just depending on cost and design and those sorts of considerations. It's envisioned as sort of an open floor plan flex space type of building. It would have a commercial kitchen. And, you know, in times of evacuation or for opening up an emergency or evacuation center, it could and would serve as that, whether you're bringing in folks, you know, overnight evacuees from other parts of the county or things, things like that. But when, you know, the vast majority of the year, when it's not serving as that, it would be an open, flexible space, whether it would be for community groups, for groups who wanted to rent the facility, who wanted to come in and use it for trainings. Maybe it could be the, you know, city use for trainings. There are a lot of opportunities there. And then part of the resiliency center program is what other types of facilities and activities are placed around it. So could be farmers markets, could be other nonprofits that we we've collaborated with, I think thirteen different nonprofits into that grant application so that that can be kind of a centralized location, whether it's for food distribution or training or volunteerism. There are all kinds of potential uses there. What we don't know, though, is how that facility would look and where it would be located. So that is really what the next step would be. If we are successful in obtaining the grant, we did apply for a project development type grant. So it's basically a master planning grant. And we would then use those funds to go out to the community, to consult with all of those nonprofit groups, to figure out the best placement, the best facilities and the best usage of of the overall fairgrounds property. And then just one kind of side note to tag along to a prior question. Because all of these things are going, are hopefully going to be master planned in the next one to two years. And we also have new facilities potentially coming online. We're forging ahead with the relationship with the Fourth District Agricultural Association in terms of trying to continue the annual fare into the future. There may be opportunities in terms of parking that we don't even know what those actually are at this point. So we want to be creative with them, with other potential partners in Petaluma, and how we can maybe reconfigure parking. And that may then play into some of the master planning components as we move forward with the resiliency center program.
Good, thank you. Just make sure we were thinking about that as we're planning these two facilities that that is very connected. And we need to make sure that that footprint and maybe this, the pathways, road pathways and connectivity and size, we actually have a plan for that when we do this also. Thank you.
Council member now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at this slide nine, the new public safety facility reduced footprint. We had talked last meeting that we talked about this to go up as high as three stories. In talking to staff, they were like, well, we are trying to keep price, you know, the to, you know, lower price and building. But I said, the Mary Isaac Center built up their third to three stories and they didn't build the interior part of it until they were ready, like maybe a year or so later. They left it empty and then they filled in as. And I see that as we build phase one, that we build it with the three stories. And then as the police phase two gets built, we can use that third story as a shared common between the police department employees and the fire department employees. So is that something we can do? I'm looking at everyone to reduce that footprint.
Yeah. Rob, do you maybe want to start on on kind of the the review that led to that assessment?
Sure. Yeah. So I will. I'll share my screen again and kind of walk through. See if I can share. If we stop sharing the slide, I'll bring up.
Just go to the next slide.
I got it.
I was on slide nine of the.
Sorry, I just stopped sharing.
Okay.
You're good. You're good. I'm going to bring up a blue beam again as soon as I can find it here on my. I don't know where it went. So to answer this question in a little bit greater detail, this is a, this is the ground floor plan as as currently proposed. And if I were to come in here just very, very briefly and to highlight the areas that absolutely need ground floor access, and we'll try to make this, you know, in in yellow would be the bunk rooms to be close to the apparatus bay, the apparatus bay, obviously, on the fireside. You know, arguably, the kitchen, obviously, you would need a main entry, so on and so forth. I think the police department would concur that some type of public interview room off of the lobby, all of the interaction with property storage and records where the majority of public interaction occurs would need to be there. And then certainly, as we get into the other areas, any evidence storage and the patrol area, as well as the vehicles, would be required to be on the ground floor. So as we quickly zoom out after that very high level exercise, what we're left with is only a handful of spaces that do not require, absolutely require ground floor access. And so some of the planning decisions that went into the programming were that of, it would be really great if the fitness room, for example, and the patrol lockers and all of the lockers were on the ground floor to afford the officers expedited access in to start their shift and expedited access out to grab something in the middle of their shift and also to leave. In addition, the fitness room being located in an area that was capable of actually being accessed from other city staff potentially, where this could be a partially secured environment where someone from fire or city government is not necessarily impeding upon the operations of the police department, the police department proper. So when we look at that equation and we take things back to the massing of the building, what we found is that arguably ninety percent of what is shown on the ground floor needs and wants to be on the ground floor to conduct the operations of each agency as efficiently as possible, given the information that we know today. So what's left?
Can, sorry, I have a very similar question. So I apologize for cutting you off. When you say things need to be on the ground floor, my next question is going to be why? So like, the bunks need to be on the ground floor. Why? Right? So I'm just like, you need to slow down and really educate us on this stuff because
Absolutely. Happy to do that. Okay, like. We're going to, we're going to get into the weeds a little bit on this in order to answer these questions. So NFPA seventeen twenty is the standard for response times, as I kind of previously alluded to before. So what we know is that the response times to get firefighters from the moment that the alarm is detected and or automatically calls nine one one, or a person calls nine one one, we basically have roughly seven to eight minutes to get units on scene before potential flashover. And if we're looking at EMS services, it's slightly less than that in order to improve the survivability rate for cardiac arrest. And I'm sure those in the fire department can talk about those technical requirements a little more detailed. When we start backing that time out and forward and we compress ourselves from arriving on scene to being notified, basically what we are left with is sixty seconds for EMS response and eighty seconds for fire response. What that consists of, that eighty seconds for firefighters to respond, that consists of an individual being alerted from potentially dead slumber, having to navigate throughout the building and then having to put their turnout gear on. And I am happy to send you plenty of presentations and data and video that show the amount of time that something like this takes. When we consider the amount of time that it takes the average firefighter to put on their turnout gear, that leaves us roughly twenty to thirty seconds to move someone from their static position to the turnout gear position, so where they put their gear on. Unfortunately, the fire department is only as fast as the slowest person. So while the seasoned veteran like the chief himself might be able to don his turnout gear in just a couple of seconds, we have to consider the fact that the rookie firefighter who's straight out of the academy is going to perhaps need a little bit more time before the unit can actually respond. So that eighty seconds is largely driven by those factors. So when we look at the relationship of space, it's ideal to keep these bunk rooms as close as possible to the apparatus while also maintaining the required means of egress for residential or R two occupancy, the two means of egress that are there, in order to get these individuals to their units in terms of the ones that respond the most and the to get them to the fastest and to the ones that respond the most frequently. It is not unheard of nor uncommon to take bunk rooms and living conditions or quarters and locate them above the apparatus bay. However, what we're doing at that point is we are elongating the travel distance pretty substantially via vertical construction. The average person will take about fifteen to twenty seconds to actually traverse twenty feet of risers or stairs, if you will, in that process. So that takes that equation and makes it all the more difficult. And from a safety standpoint, we would need to consider whether or not fire poles, which are common in some cities, but becoming less and less common as a national practice because of the amount of injuries that occur to first responders in terms of knee injuries, back injuries, longer-term chronic health issues from the impact, as well as more catastrophic injuries that might result from slip and falls and the associated overtime pay and medical claims that might come from that. So when we look at that, those requirements as to why they want to be there, that's all rooted in some pretty well-established and research planning principles for best practices that surround fire department operations. So that's, that's on the fire side. So I'll pause there to give you guys an opportunity to to ask questions related to the fireside. And then I'll go over to the police side, which is a little bit different. Any anything in that regard? Would you like me to just go to police?
I do have questions, but I don't expect you to know the answers. You said injuries from using fire poles. And you talked about the the frequency of that. Like, can, you don't, maybe you don't have to tell me what the the frequency of that is. But I would like to see that, all of that information.
Yeah, I don't have the exact statistics handy. I just know it's enough that OSHA pushes back on on them when possible. I will. I will collect that data and and try to get that in your hands.
Council member now, you were.
On that same line, I have read a million books about children, to children, about the firefighters coming down the pole from up above. And the fire pole was a means of reducing the time. And I'm sure that they can be taught to, I'm looking at interim Chief Miller, but I should be looking at the fire chief. I'm sure there's ways of reducing the the risk to our firefighters by going down the pole. I I understand how they don't want to have living above the apparatus, but the fire pole reduces the time. That's why they put it in.
Yep, that is historically why they put it in.
Because walking is longer. Am I, am I incorrect?
No, you're absolutely correct. So statistically speaking, I cited the response time for stairs and it's only fair that I give you the data back on a fire pole. It's roughly three to four seconds, depending on the rate and skill of the firefighter to go from a twenty-foot floor height to level zero, basically, the apparatus-based slab by descending a pole versus the stairs. So it's roughly four times faster than traversing stairs.
I'd just like to say there's pluses and minuses to all of this in a design. And we're not currently in the design phase. That's what we're asking council to help us move forward with, to do the design. What Rob's doing is really kind of overall general best practices and trying to come up with what is the minimum. I think in the future, we could put, we could put dorms on the, above the apparatus bay. But there are more risks with the fire pole. It's more expensive construction because it's a story and a two and three quarters tall. And so it's more expensive to beef up that apparatus bay. But those are all options. We're just not there yet.
And Chief Shock, to your point, council member now, it's not that they're unable to be trained to use it, but they're coming out of sleep, right? So you're waking up, you're hearing the alarm. And then you're, and I think a lot of that injury is is based upon somebody coming out of slumber, getting and, you know, sliding down the pole and probably injuring themselves.
And if I may, I think you're catching our drift that we want to maximize utilization of the space. And we're getting kind of in the weeds with the pole. But but that just shows you how concerned we are for that. I mean, that properties worth two million dollars an acre now. I mean, it is, you know, very highly usable. Our trend is to hire buildings everywhere in town. We have to find a way to best utilize the space.
Absolutely. And there's trade-offs. There's trade-offs and ways to make that happen. You just might increase the amount of time it takes to get somewhere or you might increase the cost or you might might be perfect. And we're trying to do, I think Rob's trying to show the best, best practice with what we have. And we can, we can tweak and adjust that based on the council's direction on what the prior, what the priorities are as we move forward with the design phase.
Yeah, I think this shows, at least in my opinion, a rather balanced approach. Maybe it it skews a little heavier towards trying to get things on in a vertical environment than than truly balanced, because in an ideal world, you would, as we get to the police side, you would have your investigations very close to your patrol, but separating them is a compromise that, you know, you can make. So, you know, shifting gears to the to the police side, again, a lot of this stuff comes down to cost effectiveness, workflow, and and really risk management. So for example, you know, obviously, as we look at things like the rapid deployment area where the specialized vehicles get stored, you know, that that obviously, these areas clearly need to be on the ground floor. They just obviously, you can't store vehicles on an upper level. But other areas like, you know, we've got, these are high bay environments, right? So these are already that one and three-quarter stories. All of this evidence storage, again, very heavy structural elements wants to be on the ground floor in terms of capitalizing on the height that we can gain, but also not having to do the structural loading to support these heavy loads from above. Operationally, the patrol area, this patrol environment was really, to be quite honest, consists of of this type of, really, this square footage here. These elements are all associated with the office. These elements are all associated with the officers that are coming back and forth on an hourly basis to and from, but more importantly, at times moving secured evidence, individuals that have been detained, um, valuable information, so on and so forth. And especially if you have someone in handcuffs or has been detained, the location of this type of environment is designed to not only protect the occupants of the building in terms of, you know, separating the civilian staff from those that have been detained, but also protecting those that have been detained from having to navigate things like stairs or, um, face operational challenges. If an elevator goes out of service, uh, whether it be from long range power failure or whatnot. But this is the, this is the type of space that is the lifeblood of supporting the community and needs to have that kind of fundamental ground floor access. When you get into things like, uh, whether there's a forensic lab, and obviously, you know, things like mechanical space and patrol storage, the forensic lab is what has a very direct relationship to patrol and the quarter, and I'm sorry, and the evidence storage, because it's the officers that are submitting the stuff and the evidence, and it goes back to the lab for processing, and then it works its way through the cycle of basically the operational needs of the department. So, you know, very quickly, we find that when you look at the relationships and the efficiencies, these are all the things, while I don't, won't say absolutely need to be, they strongly, strongly desire to be close to each other, not only from an operational efficiency standpoint, but also from the cultural standpoint in terms of promoting these officers from working together and finding that efficiency in the police force to, um, to make them, you know, the best individuals that they can be with their job by giving them the tools that they need to be successful.
Councilmember Now, any further questions?
Um, I'm, I'm just trying to, um, you know, utilize the footprints and go up. And there's also other things that need desk jobs in the firehouse, because I'm, I'm just concentrating on phase one. Um, right now, our, um, we have a satellite fire inspection, fire department right here at city hall, and I was just recently at the Sausalito for my son's pinning, and there's a three story new building, and the top third floor is the offices for fire prevention. And they were, so it's something that to look forward in the future, because we are outgrowing the, the city hall, and I'm sure they would love to use that annex over there. And we could move into that third floor. So I'm just trying to advocate for, um, utilizing a smaller footprint and going up higher. I, I understand there is a fire pole in Petaluma, and they just go through all the way. They're not going right down to their fire truck like we see on TV. But, um, I understand the OSHA requirements too and, and the safety for our employees. But anyway, thank you.
I'd just like to quick comment that, I mean, I do agree that we need, this is where we're going, is vertical, and we're using a large chunk of property. And it's a big chunk, and other cities have to go up. And so it is possible to go in this direction. I think sprawling out is not really the direction I'd like to go. I prefer to go up, and, you know, cities do this all the time. So I don't, I think there has got to be solutions, um, to the sprawl compared to vertical.
So I would just say that when we, we looked at the, um, the Santa Fe model, theirs is built in, in a slight of a hillside. So by necessity, they had to be a little bit more vertical than I think was desirable. And what we found of the feedback from them was, uh, their fitness center's on the second floor, and the officers in the report writing room below and the dispatchers were complaining about the noise and the impacts on the, the sleeping quarters. And so while I think what we saw where, was there was examples where it could be designed, it wasn't necessarily desirable. And I think what, what Rob's articulated is for the efficiencies and to maximize and lessen the burdens on staff, um, you know, one of the other examples was the, uh, officers are carrying their duty bags for the day, forty, fifty pounds of equipment upstairs to and from. And so I know it's not uncommon every beginning of our shift to be cleared from either the locker room or from the briefing room to an emergency where you're immediately going out within two minutes of coming on duty. And these officers in that building are having to, to hoof that equipment down and then trying to load their car hastily and probably are really not as prepared as they could be. And that's not a recipe for success. But I think we would gladly build up, um, I think what we are being thoughtful of is the third story doesn't necessarily add anything from what we need. We feel that the, uh, the space needs are identified and, and detailed on those first two stories. And while we would welcome additional space, we're not necessarily seeing that the efficiencies and the operational needs, we could be moved to that third story, um, with, with the impact that we're looking for.
I'm just curious, I mean, if you have a third story, are there other city uses? Or is the police department just separated from other services?
There's a, there would be a high premium cost wise for that, because public safety facilities have to be built to more resilient standards, both seismically and communications wise. And the seismic gets to be quite expensive the higher you go up. So I think for a public safety building, you want to optimize it for the functions that need that extra resiliency and consider other spaces, uh, other facilities where you would add that capa- additional capacity for growth for other departments.
Yeah, if you, if you had a, an allied agency that made sense, that needed the similar, um, resiliency requirements, then it might make sense. But, you know, to, to piggyback on Laura's comment, the other thing that you should probably be super cognizant of, um, is what other entities are in the house, in the house, if you will, um, and what risks that may or may not present to the other users of the building. So, um, you know, hypothetically speaking, just citing some other examples, um, there's a, a fire station in Washington DC. It's DC engine one. It's a very vertical construction. It's built by a developer, the ground floor, really the first two ground floors are for the fire department. And above that is multifamily housing, um, and a giant squash court that basically overlooks the US Capitol. Uh, if you get feedback from firefighters, there is significant concern about terrorist activities that may or may not occur from people moving into the building, as well as the squash balls bouncing off the walls all hours of the night. Um, but you just got to be cognizant, I'm not suggesting that you would put a squash court on the third floor. You just need to be cognizant of the, uh, the security provisions that, you know, may or may not need to take place.
I appreciate that, um, because I am thinking of that. Um, but the other thing is the two bays for a police, for your equipment and the fire department, are those, um, cement floors, have to be reinforced the same way?
Yeah, so fundamentally speaking, it would be dependent upon the loads of the apparatus. Um, I could say with a pretty high degree of confidence that you're probably looking at an eighteen inch reinforced slab for the fire apparatus, because, uh, a ladder truck or a tanker, um, full of water is significantly hever- heavier. And then that of the, uh, the specialized vehicles that police has, I would probably speculate, without getting into the detailed engineering, that the apparatus bay for the police would probably be closer to a six inch slab. And the remaining for the occupied areas might be what Laura in your area, four inch slab?
It, it really depends on what, what the soil is underneath. But I'm not sure, if your question was about, um, Rob speaking to the, the weight, was your question about the seismic resistance?
It was more of where, just the difference between the police, police vehicles versus the fire department. And then the slab, or is it the same? The slab has to be the same. That's all I want to know.
Yep. Because I know that they're reinforced. But the same material.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of quick, easy ones if I, if I could. Um, uh, what's the, um, ladder truck route through the building? Does it, uh, I mean, I see the exit point, but where's, uh, where's it return to station?
I don't know if it'd be easier to show the design, but it is a drive through design where it would basically drive into the middle of the sea and then park, drive through the station and be ready for response out the bottom of the sea.
Yeah, I was just curious whether that, uh, turning radiuses were adequate there, you know?
I trust Rob has it all figured out.
Yep, all, all, all of the turning radiuses were calculated. And the aprons are sized that, so that the turn is completed, and the driver is basically positioned on the apparatus in a straight in, straight out, so that they're not trying to do any maneuvering of the vehicle when they're pulling into the station. They're basically coming straight in, straight out.
Is that a two driver vehicle?
No, it's not.
So, okay, good. Yeah. Um, then, um, in the, uh, would the departments use shared dispatch or shared dispatch facility in this concept?
Uh, currently it's designed for just the police dispatch as currently exists. Uh, the city of Petaluma and the majority of fire and EMS agencies in the county are under a JPA agreement for a joint dispatch center that's run out of the sheriff's building called Redcom. And we would continue with that, and that's also, um, being, will be paid for if the tax measure passes.
So fire has, fire has no, um, independent dispatch in this property?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, but, but there is redundancy, and we, uh, police do have access to towers that we use within the city, and, and a disaster can take over that dispatching capability for us.
That's the polyclass lesson, right?
And Chief, I think it's probably, you know, it's worth a comment that the EOC would have the potential to serve as a backup environment for that if something were to happen.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, let's go to the EOC question. Uh, what's utilization of the EOC, you know, um, fifty weeks of the year?
For training and, and meetings on a day to day use, and then for emergency response, obviously, when you need it. But this is, this is one of the efficiencies of having all these, um, functions co-located, fire, police, and emergency operations all in one building. These, by day, these are meeting and training rooms, and by emergency, they flip views.
Did I see other training rooms in the firehouse or police station?
Uh, on the ground floor, there's a small study slash conference room area that would also potentially be accessible off of the lobby. Um, other than that, you saw the kitchen, which is where all of the world's problems get solved in the fire department. Um, and there were several small meeting spaces, a roll call room, a multipurpose room for general training for patrol, and then, um, the investigations briefing room, which would be used predominantly by, this is, this is a room that would really be secured for the investigators and the detectives, because typically, non-public and sensitive information is being shared and released in that environment, um, while the active investigations are ongoing. But really, these, these shared spaces just come in here.
And then, um, the effort in the immediate, um, that's at the police station, will that add any square footage to the, um, building there?
Yeah, yeah, we're anticipating it to provide quite, quite a influx of space, both from the removal of the temporary holding facilities that have been decommissioned. We're looking at, um, expanding our locker rooms, um, for both men and women and modernizing those and going over into that space. But then we're also looking at remodeling, uh, the current existing EOC training room and then pushing the, uh, north wall of the building to beyond the, um, the atrium or so that north overhangs. So there is going to be a sizable increase of office space, which we, uh, currently don't have the ability to onboard any additional staff, because we have absolutely nowhere to put them. And so we're hoping to, uh, create some office and workstations as well as address the inadequate workstations that we have some current employees, um, working out of right now.
Can you ballpark what you're gaining? Are you gaining like a thousand square feet? Or, you know, do, do you have that number at all?
Uh, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I think we're, we're envisioning, uh, you know, about four offices, um, at least to be, uh, added on that north wall along that, that perimeter area, which would be sizable. I think most of the offices that we have been specking out are eight to eight by ten. Um, so it'd be approximately about that, that square footage you're estimating.
Thank you. Um, the fire station, the existing fire stations, if, uh, when we retrofit each of them, are they anticipated to stay in full service during the retrofit periods?
Great question. One of the, one of the importance of important things about this master plan is we've, even with, even with some funding now, we're, we don't know what to do first. We don't want to do a full remodel of a bathroom at one fire station if in three years, we're going to do a full remodel or replacement. And we've had challenges, you know, we've had Measure U for a while, and I was like, boy, this place needs to be painted. We need to do some things. What's going on with the, another gender bathroom? Um, and so this has given us those opportunities to say, we can't maybe fund that full list that was shown, but we can prioritize so that we can make those impacts on the other fire stations, knowing that we might be living with those for ten or fifteen more years, but we can, we can get it better than it is today. So to answer your, thanks for letting me go on a tangent on that. But, um, for right now, we, we don't know, as stated, if we're gonna, I would love to keep our current fire station at one ninety eight D Street as a fire station, but not as a headquarters, just a fire station. It has the capacity to do that. It has the size to do that. I'd love to keep it a historical fire station and not replace it and put it somewhere else. Um, either way, we, we are putting together some contingency plans on, um, and we'll be notifying the council soon on some, some progress we've been making, but the site at three oh seven Boulevard South and how we can use that as potentially temporary quarters, whether that's if we get the SAFRA grant and get three years of funding to staff the ladder truck, or whether that's during a one ninety eight D Street remodel and how, how we can do that. Um, for stations two and three, those projects are most likely ten to fifteen years out for significant, um, upgrades or, or replacement. And we don't have a plan in place for that. Um, but we do need to do some short term, uh, fixes that'll get us through the next ten or fifteen years that we can inhabit the fire stations while those bathrooms are being improved and, and other items are done.
Thanks. Um, so, uh, right now, you're asking us to approve a contract for, uh, design and construction management? And, um, this is three years out. Why are you lumping construction management into this RFP and at this time?
Yeah, so at this time, we're asking the council to, uh, direct staff to prepare an RFP to go out to find a design firm as well as project management firm.
Is it project management or construction management?
Yeah, I would say it's not construction management at this point. It's project management to continue shepherding this project, um, beyond staff's capacity to continue doing that. This is obviously a very large facility project that, uh, we don't undertake every year. And so we want some specialized assistance to help us manage this project moving forward.
Okay. And, um, you know, and I'm looking at it, you have it written in the resolution as project management.
Yep.
Yeah, somewhere I got CM in my head. Um, so, um, good. And, um, uh, what have we done to, um, engage the Healthy Democracy Community Stakeholder Group to tell them that, uh, you know, we're moving ahead with parts of the vision now?
We haven't done specific outreach yet, but, um, as a part of the master planning of the overall fairground site, especially if we are to receive the grant, they would be, they would factor heavily, I believe, in the overall public outreach process. And I should just add on that part of the Strategic Growth Council requirement is for a robust public outreach component, which we've already obviously kicked off with the initial Healthy Democracy process, and that would continue both with them as well as our nonprofits and the community at large moving forward.
Right. But tonight's resolution would pretty much lock us into a site and, and define a path forward.
It would be selecting the site, and I, I think, um, you know, Rob and Laura may weigh in more on this, but knowing the site is critical for moving the design forward. And so we're, we're not just designing a theoretical fire station. We want to, to be very specific to the site as well as, for example, the traffic improvements that may be needed to get in and out of the fire stations. Those are obviously very site specific at this point.
The fire tax it's on for March, and how many years is the tax good for?
So the, the tax has no sunset clause, and currently there's one point three million per year allocated towards funding for facilities. Uh, so forty million dollars over thirty years, or it could be bonded against.
Right. And, uh, I think you presented before what the total revenue opportunity is for Petaluma and how much you wanted to put into the. And, uh, I think you presented before what the total revenue opportunity is for Petaluma and how much you wanted to put into the operating cost versus capital cost?
Yes, so, uh, yes, for, based on 60 million in revenue, it's just over 4.3 million in direct, uh, revenue to the city. Another $350,000 benefit that'll be covered in the dispatch fees we're currently paying that we won't have to and a few other, uh, operational benefits. About half of that funding will fund the nine personnel required to staff the ladder truck at that facility. And then the 1.3, uh, for the facility itself, uh, to bond towards. And then there's, um, a few other staff positions, support positions, uh, included in that as well.
Okay, um, thanks. It, it, I am, um, looking at all the numbers and trying to figure out, um, how we can get what we need and, and, um, and which one's the most important to spend the money on first. It's nice that you're bringing cash to the party.
I remember, I remember Councilmember Healy asking how we're going to pay for it when we brought forward our CPSM recommendations. Because a lot of the recommendations in our comprehensive analysis were about staffing an additional paramedic resource, fire resource. It was about moving the ladder truck to the center of town. It was having better coverage for when 10% of our calls are occurring across town, when that unit's already not available and having to respond across town. So this is, I think it covers about five of our top 10 priorities with our discussion tonight.
In the, in the CP report, they, um, asked you to look again at response times. Uh, how are our response times?
Uh, there, our, our, our stations are ideally located if they're always available for an emergency. And as calls have continued to increase, where, where the outliers we're seeing are for those cross-town. We try to get places about five or six minutes, but those are pushing out to eight or nine minutes if we had an incident here in the fire station on South McDowell was having to respond here. So there, they've been, they've been wavering and that's, the importance isn't just putting another fire station at 307 Boulevard South. It really is having that, that center fire station that will help. And then that, and then that recommendation specifically was about the turnout times. That, uh, we're right on that cusp of 60 seconds. Sometimes we're a little over, sometimes a little less. We've implemented new technologies to increase the timingness of our alerting. Uh, by the time somebody gets a call to the dispatch center and we actually get alerted, there's, there's five to 10 seconds can exist in there. And we've, we've invested in new technology to better track that and improve that. But then doing things that Rob has discussed about being closer, you know, to where the apparatus are for response are all things that as we do new construction or redesign, we'll take into consideration to help improve those.
I'm going to lob you another softball. Would you describe the new station as, um, a resilience, a robustness, um, change or something essential to our, um, reporting?
So I love Hyundai's, but, um, but this is, this is not a Cadillac. Um, I think we, we need a fleet of 10 cars and we don't know how we're going to afford them all. I'm trying to get too off, too off there. It's, it's an essential service that is built out for 50 years. Uh, day one upon being built, it can house our ladder truck. It can also, but it has a capacity to upstaff. When we upstaff a fire engine, firefighters aren't compacted into closets. They're, they're actually have dorm space during winter, winter storm or red flag upstaffing. Um, and, but there's also potential, as Rob had mentioned, with change in the fitness rooms as things change. Looking at designing them in ways that that space can adapt and expand as the needs in the community. Uh, it, it has a potential to expand out with the same footprint, but, but adjustments and build outs as time goes on. To not only house a ladder truck, uh, as soon as it's built, but staff an additional engine, whether it's red flag or otherwise permanent, and then an additional ambulance.
Yeah, I, I ask that because I, I don't want to say that this is necessary because of the ladder truck. I want to say it's necessary because of the, you know, the essential service requirements, so.
It is essential and we, we use San Rafael as an example of a, mainly because it was a public safety facility that was joint that was recently completed. So that was a great example for us. I think, um, cities like San Rafael and Nevada are also great examples in ways. The city of San Rafael has, I believe, six fire stations. The city of Nevada has five. We have three. And so, so having those comparisons and we can, you know, our, our city has increased the number of call volumes, increased our population. But since we haven't spread out, we haven't expanded our fire facilities to keep up with the demand. And so this is, this is absolutely essential. When 10% of calls are being handled from a unit, a 911 resource from across town, I, that, that does not feel the good, good to me as your fire chief. And I want to, I want to fix that. And that's, and that's why that's a priority to get that in place so we can do all the things that CPSM recommended. And then if we can do bathroom remodels or other things to help with our workforce diversity, we'll get there. We can make it better without $40 million. We're, we're going to, but we need to have that plan in place so we can start picking away at those things that make sense when they make sense. So appreciate the softball, let me keep going.
Uh, Councilmember Pozzike.
Thanks. I, I just had one comment. I'm, I'm wondering, I can't believe I haven't heard this already, but, uh, um, you know, there's a lot of parking there. 130 yacht spaces, I think I heard. And if it's going to be 11 years till we get to phase three or thereabouts, uh, that's past 2030. And, uh, you know, maybe we'll have everyone either on some kind of transit demand management or, or electric bikes. Thank you.
Okay, um, any further questions from council? Good, then, um, I'd, uh, like to thank you for the presentation. Certainly robust and in depth. And I'd like to open the public comment period on, on this item. And, um, if you do wish to, uh, make a comment, be sure to get your card in upfront and let's see. Can I ask our city clerk if we've had any public comments, uh, emails in to us?
We did not receive any public comment to this item.
Thank you very much. I'd like our moderator to, uh, read our messaging for the evening.
Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they've not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
Thank you very much. I, uh, have one card from the public and in the, the chambers. And I see no one standing and walking further forward, so I'd like to invite John Hanania to speak.
Good evening. Well, this is, uh, very good news. It's been a long time in the making. The most important thing here is public safety. And Petaluma, it needs definitely to improve their facility. There's no question about it. You owe the community that, you owe that to your staff. I heard Mr. Healy mention Cadillac and the Honda. Well, when you're talking about the police department, you're trying to recruit people, but what you're offering is the Honda, where other neighboring city are giving the Escalade or the Tesla, you know? And, you know, think about how much money you're losing when you hire a new person and they spend 18 weeks in training. But after the training and after they spend a year in here, okay? They go somewhere else because they have much better opportunities between facility and retirement. So in the long run, you're paying for more than the Cadillac, but you're getting the Honda. So you need to, to put that in the equation. And I heard so many, uh, mention about the city of San Rafael. I frequently go down there and it's a beautiful facility and I think each one of you should go and see it. Okay? And it is really important not to look at how much it's going to cost. You need to look to how much safety to each individual in Petaluma it's worth. When you look at the dollar, okay? You can't put a dollar sign on a human safety. That's when the police department, when it comes to the fire department, I do agree with the chief. I think the station on D Street, it should remain stationed. Whenever you have an event in Petaluma, okay? Those doors are rolled up. You have major, uh, public engagement with the fire department, okay? And that building, it's a very important building. It's an historic for Petaluma. And, you know, I just think you guys need to approve it. And, uh, you know, I mean, how many city manager have we gone through and we're still talking about it? How many, uh, police chief? I think I've, I've gone through seven city managers, six or seven. He, you know, the police chief is number seven today. You know, the fire chief would be, you guys have been talking about this since Chris Albertson was a fire chief. So let's, let's get it going. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers or cards, uh, that closes public comment for the evening. And, um, bringing it back up here for, for, uh, conversation. I think, um, my personal greatest disappointment is we can't, uh, get more done more quick. Uh, I am conflicted about the, uh, police department being put out into the future because without identified funding source, future looks like, you know, I, I don't see that that's going to happen. And I hate seeing a part of a plan that doesn't have a plan. Uh, I have other comments, but let me, uh, cross the dais to Councilman Barnacle.
So I want to acknowledge that you are making do. I've seen your facilities and you do need to make improvements. Um, and so I'll absolutely be supporting the immediate improvements that, um, are recommended. They're long overdue and, um, it's the least we can do tonight. And as long as I'm on the council, I'll be doing what I can to help give you the facilities you deserve, um, and that you need. I also ask, with that said, that you understand that this site in particular, that every square foot of empty vacant parking lot is going to be a contentious issue in our city. And, um, in the last council meeting, we, um, we gave direction to look at taller, um, going up. We are squeezing parking from places in the city. We're looking at an overlay in our downtown. And this does, it, it feels like, um, we're not, um, holding ourselves to the same standards that we're putting the rest of the, or the rest of the, the city to with respect to space utilization. Land utilization in particular. The, the, what we saw in the design, um, doesn't meet the criteria for, um, urban character. It doesn't meet, um, uh, from my view, when I, when I saw this, um, my initial reaction, and I'm, I'm glad that I listened to the, the presentation and, um, um, my blood pressure was able to come down because, um, you know, getting an extra 50 feet away from, you know, that's not like space utilization efficiency. And hearing, you know, risks and, you know, injuries from poles and, and things like that. Like, uh, without having a lot more information, which is what we're going to need to make a decision on this. We're not going to come back with a design and just give you a big rubber stamp to do that. I like, we want to see the alternatives, the trade-offs. And, um, I, uh, I encourage us to continue to be, um, creative in the way that we think about this. Similar to the mayor, I, um, it feels like the, the police station getting pushed out feels like a really missed opportunity. And that's why, um, you know, I keep trying to push to see what more we can do on that front. I definitely want to see, um, designs with the, um, quarters above the, um, the bays. I definitely want to see all of the things that could be on a second floor on the second floor. The visitor parking. I'm not aware that we have much visitor parking right now at our existing facilities. Fire station one, not much visitor parking. There's, and yet we have like 30 parking spaces in front of it and there's a giant parking lot right around there. I think we can get rid of that and I think we can bring the, the frontage of the facility up to Johnson Street and give it some character. Have some, you know, a loading zone in the front or whatever, uh, you know, 24-minute parking or whatever the heck it is. And long, you know, long-term visitor parking can go to the rest of the vacant parking lot that's there. That's what, part of what space utilization should be is just moving everything and trying to get it there. I, um, yeah, I was, uh, I'll say I'm really excited to see this move forward and to push it forward. I, I'm also, I was really disappointed to see, um, that the, the direction we gave to really explore different utilizations and things like that were not brought back to us. It didn't feel like we were listened to. And I don't know how the other council members feel, but that's how I, um, that's how I feel for sure. And so, um, I'm happy to, to share more offline with my feedback about, you know, how this could be, you know, broad, you know, designed. But I, I think in general, it's, um, you gotta look, you know, it's 55 acres, it's 4.8 acres. It's only 9% of the site, but this is, um, a really important site to our city. And like, it's not only, like, these are $2 million an acre. That's a, you know, um, that's $2 million an acre that we could do something else with. And we're, we're dedicating it to you and we want it to be for you. We want it to be for our first responders, but, um, this is, uh, it's not something we're going to take lightly. I certainly, the design that was there with the information that I've been provided, um, I wouldn't vote to support moving forward with a construction contract for that. So I, I just really encourage you to, um, take what we're saying seriously because, um, this is a major sensitive issue in our city. Doing something, we're, we're embarking on a master planning process for the whole city, for the whole fairgrounds. And yet we're carving off a piece of the, the fairgrounds right now for our first responders and I'm happy to do that. But, um, you know, it's on us. We have to be accountable to the public. We all are together. We're all on the same team and I'm asking you to please, um, like, just, uh, seriously, I, I, we, we need you to, to sharpen the pencil, shrink the, the amount of space that we're putting here and, um, think about ways that we can be more efficient with our space. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I just respond to that for a second?
Please.
Thank you. I just wanted to reflect, um, on the feedback and, uh, let the council know that we do hear you. We do understand. And this first round of this exercise was not really a design. It was a space planning exercise, but we, we do hear you loud and clear. And, uh, we, as we move forward with the design, we will absolutely be looking at all of these different ways to compress the footprint, to go up in height if we can, to look at the parking and how that's most efficiently laid out. So we absolutely will be looking at all those things moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else that want to weigh in?
I'll just weigh in quick.
Um, Vice Mayor Kater Thompson?
Um, I actually agree with Councilmember Barnacle about all of his comments. And I did, you know, with, um, Chief Shock, Rock went, you know, to all the sites. And I, the upgrades to me are very important. Those are really old facilities and they really need to be updated. And I'm hoping that that actually gets expedited so it's not, you know, 15 years out. And with the police station, you know, when we were there the other day for, um, Chief Savano's, you know, event, that place is just packed and it's even more packed than when I took a tour of it. Cause they're like making a space in an area and just putting a desk there. And it's in the middle of a, of an area where you walk from one door to another. I mean, so these facilities have needed upgrading for when I was on the council. I mean, that was a long time ago. And, you know, they're still the same facilities in the same condition. And so I agree, I'd like you to sharpen your pencils and see what we can do to, um, reduce the footprint. But I also really want to move forward. And I'm disappointed that a police station is going to be pushed back. And it just seems as though if we go vertical, maybe we could, I realize everybody always keeps saying it's more and more, more money, but it just seems more efficient. And so I'm happy to move this, move this item.
Councilmember Healy?
Thank you. So I concur with a lot of what has been said, um, by my colleagues. Certainly our public safety facilities have been inadequate since I first came on board. Certainly, our public safety facilities have been inadequate since I first came on board 25 years ago, and it's very frustrating that we haven't been able to make significant progress. But the good news is that, you know, at least a new fire station and an EOC do look like they're achievable in the near term. One minor comment that kind of follows from that is that since we don't have, since the Station Four can be built in the foreseeable future, but the new police station probably cannot be anytime soon, would be to flip the two buildings, just to do a mirror image of them, and put the fire station closer to the corner of Johnson Drive and Kennelworth, and that way we're chewing up less of the fairground site for the next 10 years. And so, yeah, I'd just say do the mirror image and flip the two so that we're not taking away all 175 parking spaces all at once. But for me, the biggest problem, biggest stumbling point is that, you know, we'll be taking over control of the fairgrounds in five weeks, and we've promised the community a master plan for the fairgrounds, and now we're carving off 4.8 acres, 9% of the fairground site for non-park uses. And without doing a master plan for the entire site, I don't know that this is the right part of the fairgrounds to put this on. None of us know that. It's kind of the most convenient right now because there's nothing there, but in terms of what we ultimately want the fairgrounds site to look like, I don't know that this is where we'd want to put it. And I just don't see how we can make this decision and tell the community that we want to be good stewards for the fairgrounds property if we're proceeding like this and, you know, chewing off 9% of the site without doing a master plan with community input. So, so, you know, for that reason, I'm not going to support the, the resolution tonight. And I wish I could, but I just think we're getting the cart before the horse, and, you know, I don't know how much time we would lose on this if we, if this, if the planning is something that can be picked up and moved, you know, 300 yards away, and allow that master planning process to, to actually take place, you know, that would be good news, but I don't know if, if we're flexible enough to accomplish that because, you know, there's still a lot of angst in the community over the fairgrounds, and I think we're just kind of whistling past the graveyard on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kater Thompson?
I mean, I tend to agree with what Councilmember Healy's saying as far as where it is located, but I also think it is centrally located. When you really look at the routes where the trucks would go, I mean, it just seems natural that it is the right location. Maybe it could be on it, you know, in the back part of the site, and if that would, you know, work, I think that's an accommodation. But if we move forward tonight, are we stuck with the footprint that we're looking at? I mean, you know, where everything is, or is there flexibility in moving? But I don't really want to wait until a master plan because we've been waiting 25 years to upgrade these facilities that are 50 years out of date. And so to push it down the line, I don't really want to do that. I think this is something that we need, certainly I've made a commitment to do this, and I'd like to move forward and not wait for a master plan because it's 50 acres that's left. I mean, you know, let's just say it's a five acre site, or if it's three acres, whatever it is, but rounded up, 50 acres, that I think we can do a very good master plan. And we master plan around a resiliency center and also police and fire facilities.
Follow-up question, Councilor?
Yeah, can I turn her, her comment into a question? And are we locked into this space by this, in this process? Or if we decide, if it's determined in the process of the master planning, can we, can it shift?
I think we can always change it as we move through the design. If the master planning is happening concurrently with that, and there's a decision that needs to be moved, yes. Would there be some rework to redesign it for the new site that's selected? Probably yes. But that's always an option.
So tonight, what we're really saying is, is that we're going to put a police, or a fire station and an emergency operations center, we're moving forward with the design of that at, at the fairgrounds because...
If I could ask that as a question, is tonight's action to solicit for a designer and bring that item back to council to get, to get the designer approved at council level?
We will be bringing back the approval of the design contract absolutely to council.
Before we cut him loose in design stuff, he's got to come back.
Can I follow up?
Councilmember Healy?
So if you look at the resolution that's been prepared for us, now therefore be it resolved, and then question, and point two, the preferred location for the new fire station slash emergency operations center project is acknowledged to be the northern corner of the fairgrounds property at the corner of Johnson Drive and Kennelworth Drive. So that's, that's what I think some of us are looking for flexibility on. Maybe just say on the fairground site, but delete the rest of that language, and have some language talking about to be determined in conjunction with the fairgrounds master planning process.
I'll jump in here rather than force you to do that. It would seem to me that they're preparing a proposal, request for proposal to get a designer to do a thing certain, and the thing certain has to be on ground shown to be the, where the design is to be. When it comes to us, we can say, well, we're now three months down the road and know something different, but that's sort of a setback. If, if we think we want open latitude, I would suggest that we not commit this today. And actually, I apologize, I was about to call on Councilmember Posake next, but in my comments, I think tonight's action sets them on a path to bring us back a $700,000 or $800,000 design contract. And I for one would like it to include biddable construction documents, it'll include biddable construction documents for phase one and phase two. I would like all that work to get done at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I think we, we could say, we could just make the modification that Councilmember Healy proposed. I do think that at some point the designer does need to know where the building is proposed to be going, but at this point, like you said, we may have new information in the next three months, the next six months that would solidify the design. The other thing I would just offer is that in part of this process, the, our consulting architects, Rob and Laura, did look at many different spots and many different corners on this site, the fairgrounds, and they were looking at it through many lenses in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of vehicle access response times to get out to calls, and those all factored into this selected location. But again, there's still maybe new information that comes to light that would allow us to switch down the road if we need to.
And I will join with the others that say maybe this is too soon for this action, given that we should be seeing the alternatives and we should be sharing with the public the, you know, we, I don't want to go back to the public and say, you know, the, we haven't, we voted tonight on, on this item, and we haven't even got the fairgrounds back and haven't sorted out with the DAA or anything like that. I think it's a little card ahead of the horse. I would love to have a January, February first general plan meeting, push this as the workshop, show how good the quality of work is, and, and have a public support of it prior to running. And Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a great idea. When do we anticipate the fairgrounds master planning process kicking off and concluding?
Hopefully, we'll hear back on the grant sometime in the spring, and then we could, I would expect immediately go out to solicit for a firm to walk us through that master planning process thereafter, which likely takes a year plus, once we kick that off.
And if we don't get the grant, we would still do probably, I mean, I would say at least starting mid-year, so probably sometime in the summer.
It just seems to me there's a way to sync these up so that we're not getting the cart before the horse like it's presented tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I think it will be synced up, because by the time we bring this back to council, and I don't know, Brian, what the timeline is to bring this back to council, the RFP list of responders or the contract with the designer, it's probably not until...
It may be close.
I, I think it's going to be totally synced up. So I, I think the biggest concern from staff's perspective is that it's, it's increased cost. You heard even a year is an increased cost. So I think if we do this concurrently, we can use this as part of the master plan and not miss a beat. But I wouldn't delay this tonight.
So how would staff propose wordsmithing item two on, on the resolution?
We could just simplify to say that the preferred location for the new fire station slash emergency operations center is, is the fairgrounds property. Just leave it simple like that.
I can support that.
And I appreciate that it will take a while to get the proposal out the door, and then it will take a while to get it back in from consultants who might want to view it. The consultants invest significant effort to prepare the quality, especially as complex a project as this is, so many different disciplines, that I'd want to be rock solid that we were telling them the exact land we were on before proceeding. So do we have an estimate of when we want to advertise the RFP? Does staff have that in mind?
Yeah, it would definitely be coming after the holidays. We would need to develop the RFP, then issue it, get, you know, allow time for bids, and then get it back. So it's, it's going to be after the first of the year for sure that we would be releasing it.
Can that be coordinated to be after the first meeting about this? So if we don't, I mean, and that would just be direction to staff, not a resolution to the item, but I would be most comfortable if we had the proposal be released to consultants after our first public meeting. That way, if we needed a cut and change, if anything went sideways, we'd know.
Our first public meeting on what? I'm sorry, Mayor.
On the fairgrounds master plan for site back.
That would probably start to get late because we may not be doing the beginning of master planning until March, April, May, somewhere in there. So if we're not releasing this RFP until after that, I think that starts to push it out a bit.
Could we call it a celebration of the city's possession of the fairgrounds and call it a, you know, I mean, there's, there's, I'm not quite comfortable yet, I'm looking for an answer, but let me push around the council. I had Councilmember Posake next.
And my comment's been covered.
Okay, Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I'm, I'll move the item with the, with the proposed amendment to provision two in the resolution. I also just want to say that part of us taking back the, like, taking back the fairgrounds and starting the master planning process, part of being transparent about what's going on at the fairgrounds is also talking to the public about this, and letting them recognize, helping them understand why this is an important place for this, and why this is part of our, you know, our public safety future. And, and so I understand the, the uneasy feeling, I think we all feel it, because we know that this is a sensitive topic, but I think also, like, we have to take like our insecurities as politicians and put them aside, and make sure that we're like educating the public about why this is the important thing, and not let the, not give the illusion that this isn't the absolute best place for the public safety facility. And that is, I think if we all are, you know, speaking clearly and educating the public about it, it's going to be really clear, and I think they'll embrace it. And we just, it's got to be part of our communications on this.
And Councilmember Barnacle, to that point, both of our chiefs did do an op-ed piece for that exact reason, and we will continue to be very transparent about...
And thank you to our chiefs for doing that.
Vice Mayor?
Just to make a quick comment, I actually feel very confident that this is where a police and fire station should go on this particular area on the site, and I think we have to remember that we have tenants there for the next three to five years. And, you know, we're going to be pushing this out again, and I actually feel extremely confident that this is the exact location. I think what we have to be clear on is the design, height, you know, making the footprint smaller, and that's what I'd like to focus on, but I feel personally this is the correct site. If you really look at the green lines and where all the, you know, where people drive. And I will tell you, my entire campaign, every time I talked to somebody, it was about police and fire going to eventually be at the fairgrounds, and it was pretty much at this site. And that's pretty much what I said, and you didn't get any pushback at all. People recognize the importance, the city is a very different city than, than we were, and we need to keep up in the 21st century and not go backwards. And I feel like we are just kind of debating over a site, and I'm just unclear why people don't quite understand that this is the right site on 55 acres. And I'll second the motion.
I think we have the second coming from the Vice Mayor. Okay, and then we'll have Councilmember Shribbs?
Okay, I'd just like to reiterate some of the things that have been said. I do agree with the parking that's going to be in front of the building. We have to stay, who's that going to be? And is there a way we can integrate that parking, that spaces with other parking spaces for other buildings that are going to be on site, so that they're together, rather than just only serving only the police and the fire, they need to be serving other buildings too. The other possibility is going to a third story. Yes, I understood about the seismic and that it's going to be a little more expensive, but any building we put there that's going to have a large community room is going to be, whether it be above the resiliency center, above the, maybe the future city hall that may be there, or above whatever auditorium that we build, whatever we build there is going to be a larger building, and it's going to be just the same seismic requirements. So it's still not going to be that, less expensive. So if we had a third floor, what I would consider, if we're thinking about resiliency center, we're going to need a space for group meetings of large numbers of different people from regional areas coming in. So as part of the resiliency center, we'll need some actual meeting space for everyone to get together and coordinate for the entire 10,000-plus people that show up. So I think that needs to be part of the, probably above the police, maybe the best place put, or fire, but probably the police station, putting that third floor, a large meeting room that could be turned into an operations center for a, for the resiliency centers and the 10,000 people organizing everything that needs to happen, because all the food services have to show up, the homeless folks have to be taken care of, whoever's out there. So think about adding in that feature as a possibility in the new design, please, on that part. And then as far as moving the site, the other, the only place to put this size of building is, like, one of the reasons you picked this is because there's no buildings right there. If you move it just about anywhere else, I looked at a site, if you look at the map, other buildings would have to disappear first, which means, so either, the next possible site would be the, where the administration building is now, that parking lot, and with the old fire station, which is now rebuilt, that's probably the next most appropriate spot, but all those would have to disappear to make that happen. And if we're talking about time and do that, even part of the school might have to disappear to accommodate that size. So if we can, if we think we can move the school and, and rebuild, and the administration, or any other buildings that are out there, I think we can move that site over to a different place, but if we're going to do it in the next five years, probably not. So that's probably the, the advantage of picking this site as best. I still think personally that Payron is a better access than, than, than the other street that it'd be on, a little closer in the main street, especially D Street, get across town. I would still favor Payron, but that requires removing buildings to make that all happen. So if, if we're comfortable saying, okay, we are going to move the school somewhere else in the next two years so that we can build something on that site, I say, great. But otherwise, let's do it now, and I fully favor both fire and police together. If we moved it, we could do a mirror, it isn't that hard to do a total mirror image, and just like flip the whole thing. That, a computer can do that in seconds. So I'm not worried about redesigning and the cost of doing that if we, even if we do it, because the site's pretty flat throughout. So wherever we move it on site, it could be as is or mirrored in some way, or just split it as angle, two angles, if it's on a corner, and still have meeting spaces. So I don't think the cost of changing the design down the road if we need to, as long as we keep it on the site, probably, this is probably going to be the, the best site for it anyway. So anyway, I'd say let's go for what we have tonight. I'd follow up with the motion, and I'd support it at this point.
Councilmember now, could you? Councilmember now, could you?
I have to take us back to the very first fire, was that Tubbs Fire in 2017? And the fairgrounds was used for an evacuation, for not just people, but also livestock. So the livestock were coming in on the Pay Ran site, the people were coming in through the main gates, and I was actually the employee that opened those gates for the first evacuees that showed up at the fairgrounds. And we have to have equipment in place, having the, the resiliency center right next door would be so handy, and the police and fire, you know, I'm thinking that we, we get it all built in the next five years, because we know there's gonna be other natural disasters, as Councilmember Shribbs has pointed out. We need to make sure that we keep that space open for the livestock that need to be evacuated, and for the humans, and for, we had RV parking in the front part, so. And the other council members aren't privy to what we saw at the Parks and Rec meeting, but last week, they took that administration parking lot next to the administration building, and it's now set for recreational use for basketball, pickleball courts. And they're even talking about taking away the library employee parking at the library for the Kenilworth Park. So I think somebody needs to put it all together, and master plan it, and present it to the entire council and mayor, because we're trying to pick apart this property, but it really is the part of the property that's not, was not used during that evacuation. It was, and if there was a joint meeting, it was held in Herzog Hall or in the administration building on the fairgrounds. So if we get three stories, I think that the police department could use that third story until their Phase Two gets built out. And then when they move into their Phase Two, then our fire prevention can move into the third story, and we free up some space at City Hall for other departments here at City Hall. So that is my future goals, and I have been advocating for a new police station for 20 years, because the interview room for four adults and a child victim was the size of a broom closet. And it was, I never wanted anybody to ever have to go through that again, and that was 20 years ago. So I will second the motion if there hasn't been a second.
There's been a second. I think it's been seconded a few times.
Oh, okay.
And Vice Mayor?
This is just a quick comment, but you know, I always kind of envisioned that we would have a City Hall there, but is there, I mean, just food for thought, just even have like a council chambers there? Because everything's electronic, it's in the middle of the city, and that's what the third floor could also be, is council chambers, because 60% of the people live on the east side, and it would be great if we had something more centrally located.
On Vice Mayor, that, you know, as we, especially as we were planning to have workshops and things, we noticed that even, just even Lucese, right now, it can't be a really good place necessarily to accommodate all the needs. So to have another flex space for meetings, for workshops, for the goals and priorities, you know, for those, those larger, you know, all-community, we'd love to have something like that at the fairgrounds. Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to say, it's, the good news that you mentioned earlier is that we're restaffing the police department to its, you know, pre-crisis day level and to its appropriate staffing levels. And we do have to make room for, for that staff. I mean, you can't just hire staff and not have space, so I'm looking forward to that space. And also, everyone who worked on Measure U, the fundamental of Measure U was that this was for public safety. So it's, you know, the appropriate place for all the funds to go. And lacking other comment, I'd like to ask the clerk to have a roll call vote.
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posekay?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate staff's time and exhaustive time on that. That was everything we needed to know on it. Item nine, introduction, first reading of ordinance to change certain appropriations for the operations of the city of Petaluma, July 1 to June 30 of this fiscal year, and resolutions updating and authorizing the funded permanent position schedule, and resolution authorizing the commitment and release of various general fund reserves for specific use. Welcome. And to help us with this is our brand-new finance director, Jesse Gooch. Thank you.
You got it, Jesse Gooch. So, hang on, getting settled. Good evening, Mayor McDonnell and council members. The city reviews its budget on a continual basis, and typically brings three budget adjustment reports to council over the course of each fiscal year. So tonight, we have the first quarter adjustments to the adopted budget for fiscal year 2023-24. The budget adjustments include items stemming from approved council actions since July 1, carryovers of prior year unused budget appropriations, and some new items based on current needs. We also have an increase to the permanent position schedule of one limited term FTE. A detailed list of all the adjustments is included in the staff report. Additionally, we have updates to the general fund committed fund balance amount. GASB 54 requires that fund balances committed and released for specific purposes be authorized by resolution of the city council. At this time, we recommend releasing 1.57 million for current use for the general plan and turf replacement, and committing 0.96 million for future uses. The net effect of these movements will result in committed fund balance of 0.69 million. The recommended action is that the city council introduce the attached ordinances to amend appropriation budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. It is also recommended that the council adopt the resolution committing and releasing general fund reserves for specific uses, along with the resolution updating the authorized and funded permanent position schedule. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And we're happy at the clarity and brevity. Thank you very much. Let's bring that up to council and ask council any questions. Councilmember Shribbs?
There was just a question that came in from one of our citizens, just asking, I think there was appropriation for funds, movement of funds for our, the new park that went in, and whether that was appropriated specifically for the artificial turf that was gonna be needed there, because it wasn't quite defined on that. So I just thought I'd just, clarity and transparency as to that particular place and the fund, the extra funding that was needed, or was already done. So just, could you explain that a little bit?
Yes, of course. So since Lucese Park was put in with the artificial turf 10 years ago, we have been putting money aside, committing fund balance in the general fund for potential replacement of whatever needs to be done, whether that's, you know, I don't think any final decisions have been made as to whether, or, you know, what type of turf is going to go in there. We do have a capital improvement project right now that is being funded by those committed fund balances that we've put aside. And so all we've done is released some of that funding for that ongoing capital improvement project. Again, I don't believe the final decision has been made as to whether it would be replaced with artificial turf or not.
And I've got our director of Parks and Rec, Drew. Thank you, Jesse. Drew, did you want to weigh in, please?
Yeah, I mean, we're just here to support, with the finance director articulated there, that there's no movement on that project as far as a decision to make on artificial or natural grass or alternate recommendations. But, but yes, look forward to bringing options forward to council at a future date.
Thank you, I just wanted to have that clarified.
Councilmember Healy?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that briefly, and, you know, a few of us on the dais know that the 10-year-old artificial field at Lucese is the second one, because we were around when the first one was paid for. But, so, just moving the funds over adds it to the fund balance, and we don't have a project planned for this, this coming fiscal year, because, you know, there was a bill in the legislature that would have banned these, these kind of chemicals and artificial, but that either failed to pass the legislature or was vetoed. But I think the industry is working hard to come up with suitable replacements, and if we wait a year or two before doing it, I think that product will be out there. So I'm willing to support moving the money over with the thought that it's gonna be there when we have a product that we're gonna be more comfortable with.
100%.
And I think that'll be the model for us going forward with all the artificial turf fields in town.
Vice Mayor, Kater Thompson?
And I agree with both the other council members, that was, I zeroed in on that also, about the art, if it's artificial turf or regular turf, or what is it? So, yep.
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I agree with the comments about turf. I was, one would like to point the council to a November 10 letter we received from Christopher Smith and Melissa Abercrombie, about two public art projects that are coming, that are moving forward, the H Street Pocket Park, where a fine balance will be. And the second one is at the River Arch, where the David Best Arch is in. And basically, in a nutshell, what Christopher Smith was laying out is that there, these are, you know, public art projects, but the public art budget is not able to be used for site improvements. And so as a result, we just put this public art there, but we don't actually make any improvements around it, and there's no funding for it. And, you know, there's a number of hiccups that have come and gone with these projects that I talked to Christopher about, and I encouraged him to write this in, so we could at least discuss it and make a, you know, an informed decision of what we think. But I'll say, when I was on Parks and Rec, we had, on the commission, when we were replacing playgrounds, we had a specific budget of like $90,000 for playground replacement. And then you do the surveys, and the surveys all come back, and they tell, you know, what age group and whatnot, and then they say anything else, and overwhelmingly, people said seating and shade. But we never had budget for seating and shade. And this reminds me, it's a similar situation, where, you know, we've got budget for the public art, we put this beautiful piece of art in, and then we don't have the budget, or we don't allocate for the rest of the site improvements, and it feels like it's an opportunity to, you know, a missed opportunity to really sort of create places.
Did you wish to weigh in?
I just wanted to weigh in, yes, and thank you, Councilmember Barnacle. That is on my, that is on staff's radar screen, and we're actually starting to look at, and we're pulling our budget request together holistically. We actually got a request just a few days ago to aid with the Helen Putnam expansion improvements before it's turned over to Regional Parks, because it is within the city limits. So we've got a lot of requests right now, and the basic things, like you mentioned, the shade, the, the lighting, we are recognizing, and we are working with our finance department right now to figure out some park, parkland monies, but we need to look at the NEXIS study, and happy to talk about that during budget time, holistically.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Healy?
I think the city manager more or less stole my fire there. I'd want to thank the council member for raising that subject, and I think that's something we should look at in the next budget cycle.
Councilmember now?
Also, not to, you know, go against what Councilmember Barnacle, but we also have opportunities, and nonprofits have approached me for, they want to build the fishing piers back that are gonna go at the end of that first street?
C Street.
C Street, and First, where, along the river. So there's nonprofits who, who have been raising money, who want to do things for our community, and that's also something, so we can, and being part of the Parks and Recs, they approached me, and I turned it over to Public Works, and for the future. So there, that's also a great possibility that we can look to.
Thank you. Anecdotally, first time I met Chief Shock, was talking about doing the C Street Park some dozen years ago or so.
Yeah, and soccer fields.
Well, I didn't meet the chief at the soccer field, no. I might have met you at the soccer field a couple times. But the, and I do want to compliment staff for highlighting, I think the 10-Patash Court is in the calculations here, and just has highlighted that a house that could have gone out of our affordable housing inventory was preserved by the city's action, and, and it's an older style of affordable housing finance programs, and so was vulnerable to falling out of our program. So I appreciate that staff kept that in the program. And with no other comments, I'd like to have a motion. Take that back, why don't we do public comment on this item? And I've got an "I" from everybody. So let's open public comment and ask the clerk if we've received anything on this item?
We did not receive any public comments to this item.
Thank you very much. And will our moderator read our message?
Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments, and then this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation, and a countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and the viewers.
And thank you very much. I see no one making a move towards the cards or towards the clerk. And so with that, I'd like to declare the public comment closed for the evening, and back to council. And can I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
So motion by Barnacle, and second by Kater Thompson, and a roll call vote, vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posekay?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are now adjourned before 10 to 10. Very good evening, thank you all.